They're saying no, because it's only one of many projects and you don't want to use it for the benefit of some people and not others and some rates. So they're saying that that's why they'd prefer not to use it. And I know that Jim Sheehan will be here tonight, in case there are questions on that article, if he does choose to reconsider it. Because the board voted favorably on it last week.
Ms. Deere, come in.
To my knowledge, yes.
Denise Warro, minutes from the...
So Melanie moved last week. So she sent me the draft minutes just later this afternoon, so I haven't even had a chance to look at them.
All right. So it's about 6:30?
Actually Marlborough, she's a little closer.
6:31, and we're going to open the selectmen meeting Monday, April 4th, 2016. Can we stand and pledge allegiance? Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. So do we have anyone for the public comment?
So hi, I'm Elizabeth Burton, 21 Balch Avenue. I'm the Chair of the Library Board of Trustees. And I just wanted to clarify, last Board of Selectmen meeting on the 28th, you were discussing the library budget, and I wanted to just give a little clarity on some of the numbers and be available to ask any questions, if you had any questions. One of the questions was, why was our salary line up to 107 versus 103 at a straight 2%? Would've been 103, and we were asking for 107. And that's because we, if you recall, in the fall, we gave some library staff, library assistants, an additional salary increase because they were so underpaid compared to other libraries, and we were losing staff regularly to go to other libraries to, you know, for higher salaries. So our senior library assistant, we raised up from $11.20 or 22 cents to 15. And the library assistants, and that senior library assistant has been here six years. She's been helpful in training new staff and, you know, consistency through the library. And the library assistants, who, we have two library assistants from $10.20 to $11. So minimal increases, but it's an attempt to, you know, keep the salaries increasing up, you know, with the 2% every year, or the 1.5% every year is a slow climb if we don't do it, and that's an issue of salaries, I mean of staff turnover. The other one is giving the interim or the library director position a 2% raise. We are already under the minimum library director salary in the Massachusetts libraries. And this 2% keeps us moving forward in incremental ways that we can remain competitive. And it's, you know, little money that we're talking. And the interim is currently here, started in January, so this is her fourth, just starting her fourth month and doing a great job. And when we hire a new person, you know, when you're already $6,000 to $8,000 under the standard minimum, the 2% helps, and it shows that we are supported by the town budget. We also discussed, you know, that it's really important to have the salary budget be supported by the municipal budget line, and if there was any, so if you notice in our budget, we decreased some of our other budget lines, like technology and stuff, figuring we would be able to find other funds from either the trust funds or donation account that we can put towards that if the salaries were met. And let me just check my notes, make sure I haven't forgotten. We also were asking for a 2.5% raise for the youth service librarian, who was our only full-time staff during, you know, the fall when we didn't have a library director. And so she really stepped up to the plate and did a lot of training of all of the new staff, juggling the schedules for keeping the library opening and not having to, you know, do any reduction of hours while we had a slowdown in staff.
On the 2.5% raise, you guys said that, you set the 2.5% raise, or that's something we set? I can tell you this, and only on behalf of me, I wanted to keep all the town employees at a 2% raise because I felt it was the fairest. I'm sure there's other people in the town that deserve a 2.5, or 3, or 4, or 5.
Right.
I wanted to keep it flat across the board, so it's even, it's fair, and that's where, if something comes up that it didn't make it to the 2.5, I can tell you that's how I feel. And I know, you say that the person did a real good job and what have you, but there's other people here that feel the same, and they feel like they belong, you know, making more money, and, you know, you just can't do it.
Yeah, and it's just hard when our salaries are already below minimum, the minimum of the town to, it's just to be aware, if the staff turns over, these are the reasons why.
Can you guys turn around and work on a salary increase, or a job title or something with that person, or whatever?
There's, you know, there's only, you know, so few roles in the library, it's hard to, you know, it, you know, just creates unrealistic...
And the other comment I'll make, and I know I see the new interim, or the interim director tonight?
Jan, Jan is here.
And this has nothing directed toward the whore. Before, we had a situation when you guys had come in and said you had hired a director, and in a short period of time, you had said, well, it didn't work out. This time, we could've went, was it three years? And we could've kept this person in place for three years.
Only if they want to stay there. That, by law, you can keep an interim for three years.
Where I'm getting at, you guys must think very highly of this person in four-month time, they didn't even make it to the sixth month, to make this person full-time.
Well, we're literally asking for funding the position as, you know, not necess, I mean, Jan is doing a fabulous job, but not just the position, because, I mean, it's the position of library director.
Right.
And you're, we're already, you know, 6,000 to 8,000 below the minimum.
Yep.
You know, getting a 2% on 61 is helpful to keep moving in the right direction.
Right.
If you're, if somebody reads our budget, which are public documents, and they do do their due diligence, they're like, well, your town didn't increase it, you know, you're not behind it. So anyway, that, it helps us keep marching along.
This is really not moving the position, this is just putting the money in place.
Yes. Right, and it's fiscal year, you know, and we're...
So that's how you think it's just fiscal...
Seventeen.
So you just strictly budget a fiscal seventeen year term?
Right, right, right. And we are, and the search committee is in the process of looking for a permanent director.
Yep.
So interim is a tough position.
All right, that's the only questions I had. Anyone else have any other questions? Ed, no. Okay, all set, I think we're good.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Oh, there was one other thing. So it was mentioned that we did meet with the FinCom in, like, in February, but there was only two members of the committee there, so there was no changes to our budget. So the budget that we presented, we emailed one on the 26th of January, and then February 11th, that is the final one, so we didn't make any changes when we met with them that day.
All right. Again, thanks for coming in. All right, so we have an appointment of Cassandra Murphy to the position of, oops, I'm getting in my tuckeredack. So we need to approve the warrant, I should be doing my little... Any other resident comments? I didn't think there was. Okay, now we'll go to approve the warrants.
All right, everybody.
That's all right. Motion to approve payroll warrant number 16-41, in the amount of $162,711.53.
Seconded.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Motion to approve deduction warrant number 1639A, in the amount of $23,332.67.
Seconded.
I'll second that.
And any further discussion? All in favor?
And motion to approve bill warrant number 16-41, in the amount of $168,835.77.
Seconded.
I'll second that also.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Okay, thanks for that, Mike.
Sure. Now you can move on.
All right, so now we're going to go to appointments, and we're going to appoint Cassandra Murphy to the position of the Treasury Collector of Clerk. This position will be in conjunction with her administrative assistant position, and between both positions, she will work 30 hours per week at the rate of 1925 per hour. The appointment is effective April 5th. So can I get a motion?
I will make a motion that we appoint Cassandra Murphy to the position of Treasury Collections Clerk.
And can I get a second?
Seconded.
And any other further discussion?
Yeah, she's not here.
So a couple, I just wanted to say, I wanted to say thank you to Emily Booton tonight, it's her last night, so Cassandra's spending a few hours with her just finalizing the office procedures. Cassandra's been great training over the last few weeks, I have no doubt that she'll be phenomenal in both of these roles, so I appreciate the support of this appointment.
Great, so all in favor? All right, so then we're moving down the list, we have an appointment of Linda Freo of 12 Bear Hill Road, Groveland, to Historical Commission through June 30th, 2017. Can I get a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion to accept Linda Freo for the Historical Commission.
And seconded.
Yeah, I'll second that motion.
And any further discussion? And all in favor? All right, so moving on, we have discussion and possible vote with Chief Kamelowitz, memorandum of the agreement of his employment contract. Bob, how you doing? Good, good. Do you want to start, or? So basically, the, we had sat down, and we had come up with an agreement, and I will say that, for the town people to realize that the town is going to be saving money with your retirement, I'm not going to give a dollar more or anything, but it's a win-win for the town of Groveland and for you as well. Again, we appreciate all you've done for the town, you know, you've done a great job, and I know you want to move on, and you're excited to get to your retirement and what have you. So I was, I was good with it. I don't know if the rest of the board wants to discuss it at all. I know we have met already on this.
No, I mean, I read through all the items, and it seems like everything is there that we discussed. And I'm assuming you read through and you agree with everything that's on there, you signed it, so.
Yes.
No, I agree with Bill, I mean, you know, going to have you around for, what, nine more months or so, and then it'll be kind of here and there, and supportive to whoever the new chief is?
Yes.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I appreciate it, I read the document, I was very pleased with the outcome, and your ability to, you know, help with a transition is phenomenal, and I really appreciate it. And I think that the board feels strongly about it, not just me, but I think the board, we as a board appreciate it.
Thank you.
Especially the transitional component is so important. You bring a lot of years of experience and expertise, and it's a big job, you know, and it needs to be, we want it to be transitioned smoothly.
Yes, and I think this will help immensely.
Yeah, appreciate it.
All right. I think, like I said, I think it's a win-win, because you'll be around to whoever, whoever becomes the next chief, you'll be able to stay intact a little bit and help with transition, I think it will make a lot of sense.
Yes.
Okay, everybody else good with this? Ed, you good?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
You do need to vote on it.
We need to vote on it, so we need a motion.
So we got a motion, make a motion to vote on it?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to accept the memorandum agreement on Chief Kamelowitz's retirement plan.
Seconded.
I'll second that.
And any further discussion? And all in favor?
You're unanimous.
Thanks for coming in, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so is Sam in the building?
Yes, I'll phone to come over.
Yes, he was meeting with someone earlier.
Let me, I'll go get him. I don't know if you want to talk to Bob first?
I'll talk to Bob. So we have Robert O'Callaghan in the role commission to discuss the Mass DOT Complete Streets and, and, tentative, whatever the hell you're...
Initiative.
Initiative. I'm not doing good tonight at all.
That's all right.
You're going to wear your glasses, Bill.
Yeah, that wouldn't even...
He doesn't want to.
Well, you have the package in front of you, some of the, you have the policy that we want you to adopt.
Okay.
And if you, I could just read it, just the first...
If you could just do a quick, a quick summary of what it's all about, for the public.
And for you.
And for me.
Yeah. It's about, well, Complete Streets, a program put out by Mass DOT to all the towns, cities and towns in the state, to enhance pedestrian traffic and bicycle traffic, and keep streets safe, traffic calming, so you narrow the road up a little to lower the speed limit down, projects like that. So every town is eligible, and city is eligible for $400,000. Whether it's Paverell or Groveland, it's, the set fee is $400,000, and $50,000 for technical assistance, which we'll need coming up probably for the plan, prioritization plan. So what we want to do, what I want to do is a selectmen to adopt this policy, and, which we have to do that in order to qualify for any funds. We have to adopt the policy, and then we have to adopt a prioritization plan. And I'm going to meet with other departments in this town for the plan, to see where, you know, weakness is for crosswalks, sidewalk situations where people can't walk on the sidewalks. When we were at the workshop, I attended a workshop in Waltham, a month or six weeks ago, and the PowerPoint presentation, the engineer that was giving the presentation said, how many people in the room see this every day in your town? And it showed a wheelchair going down the street, not on the sidewalk. So, in Groveland, you see that here.
Right.
So that'll help upgrade our sidewalks, and they want connectability, so we can connect a lot of this, the sidewalks together, make them safer, wheelchair accessible.
So when I was, I did a job for the city of Salem, and it's basically what you're talking about, they had all the old sidewalks without the handicap accessible entrances to the sidewalks, and that's what we did, we went in there and did that, and they put the lines down, so...
And this will pay for it.
It'll pay for it.
And it's made like, it's run like Chapter 90, it's 100% reimbursable, and it's run through the Chapter 90 program, not the program, but it's run by the same local aid office, state aid office. So the person...
I just want to chime in, so what's different with this with Chapter 90 is, Chapter 90, we get about $239,000, this is $400,000 for every community that applies, would be eligible. So, I mean, that's huge money for us. If we are doing repair work on streets or sidewalks, we can pave that road as well. So instead of using the designated Chapter 90, we could use this Complete Streets if we do bring that street up to a Complete Street designation. So this would be huge for our community.
Do you have a priority list already imagined?
No, no. Well, I'm going to work on that, start working on that, but we have to adopt the policy first. And then we'll bring, then I'll bring the priority list to you, you know, at another meeting. Like, one of them off the top of my head is maybe around the intersection of Center and School Street, maybe a crosswalk, controlled crosswalk.
Better crosswalk there?
Yeah, a controlled one. And it pays for raised crosswalks, they call those, they're like flat-top speed bumps. We might be putting some of them into slowing, it's for traffic calming too, slow down the cars. You wouldn't put that in on School Street, but you'd put it on another, a smaller street. But you'd do the crosswalk on School Street, the controlled one.
Yeah, that's a high-traffic area, at least in the morning.
So if we had, so what Denise just said is, if we had a bad area like Center Street and School Street, we actually can do that whole intersection over, kind of on this money type thing.
If you're making it, right, so if you're doing the handicap accessible, the crosswalks, if it meets the criteria. I think one of the things that we were looking at was doing the main street from Shanahan to Town Hall piece of the rail project, because that would really look at the sidewalks, and as you know, our sidewalks in that stretch are not the best, so we could upgrade the sidewalks with those funds. Again, we're getting $400,000, and they expect the program to continue.
Early?
I don't know if it was yearly, I don't think it's $400,000 a year, but it's every few years.
Right now, it's two years. And they saying they're going to continue the program, now they said that, we'll see.
So, because I have no idea what it would cost, if you wanted to do that project at Center Street and School Street, what would that cost?
It would just be, it would be a light, control light, so it'll be, I'm going to say 40, 50,000.
All right, so there's plenty of money to do that, do that...
A few other projects.
Few other projects, so it's not just one or two, it could be five or six different projects.
Oh, that's what it's going to be, we're going to have, our plan's going to be all over town.
Okay.
We want to do some connections too. You know, sidewalks that end, and then there's, like, there's 100 yards of no sidewalk, then there's another sidewalk.
Right, okay.
Ed wanted to say something. Why wouldn't that intersection pool and center be under the Route 97 project?
It's, it's not, it didn't qualify for a light there, under the, with the traffic, they did a traffic analysis. I know it, they put traffic lights in another spot where...
No, I can see, I could see that, I could see where Center Street wouldn't, the volume on Center Street wouldn't, but that doesn't seem like a great spot for a walk light there.
It didn't have a good, well, there's a lot of, but there's a lot of people, kids that come from the houses like Apple Blossom to walk to school, and they have to cross.
You going to have sidewalks on both sides of that, when they redo that?
No, just one side. Phase two, you have to, on two sides, because the federal government changed the guidelines, and we can't get a waiver, I've tried to get a waiver, so we're going to, the next phase, after Parker Road to the center is sidewalks on each side.
Don't have something going on, say?
Yeah, this is great, Bobby, took a workshop, right? Yeah, yeah, we had to take the workshop to qualify, someone from town.
Apply.
Actually, we could apply.
Yep.
And Mike Davis was one that, like, gave me a heads-up.
Good, thanks, that's why I do see a tie-in potentially with a portion of the rail trail that's en-road. The good news is, we have complete separate funding for the Route 97.
Right.
So we don't need to use any of that money for Route 97, as far as you can tell.
No, but you can use, you can use the Complete Streets money to, to, on 97 if you wanted to.
If you wanted to.
If you wanted to.
If there was something else.
See, what I was answering Eddie's question, the crash rate wasn't high enough at that intersection of school and center...
Really?
...to go with a set of lights.
What happens, do you know what happens to money that's not used, in case we have, go back?
Well, it's reimbursable, so as we complete a project, we submit it and they reimburse us.
Yeah, it's just, it's similar to Chapter 90.
And it is separate funding, it's a separate track from Chapter 90.
It's separate from Chapter 90.
Yes.
Nice, that's a...
It's just, it's out of the, you'll use it.
Do you think, do you think we have a good chance of getting the money?
Right, yes, yeah. That's, this is one of them, the letter, this, the policy, we have to do this policy, then do the plan.
And I have one more question, on the policy itself, can we adopt it as written, or do we have to write a policy?
No, so Bob had taken some other communities, and then I went through, same thing, I looked at a bunch of different communities in Massachusetts that have already adopted policies, and this is what we've come up with as what best suits ours. Bob filled in the specifics to Groveland, so you could certainly adopt this policy as it stands right now.
All right, I'd like to make a mo, can I see that, please?
Sure.
I know I read it, I have some big draft on it, so. I'd like to make a motion that we adopt a Complete Streets policy as written by the Highway Commissioner, Bob Eric Hilian, and it's part of our packet here tonight, so it's this specific draft copy, which I trust that you've all read. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor? All set? Nice job, Bob, thank you.
Thank you.
So that's, so how would we do this, Denise? We'd have to make another one up with, for them to sign, right?
Yes, so I will remove draft.
The next meeting?
Actually, I don't think we have a spot for them to sign, we just have a date for them that they adopted it.
We'd have to do it for the next meeting, you could have it.
I don't think, the other communities didn't have a signed one, we just have a date adopted, so.
Oh, all right.
I don't think they need to sign it where they voted on it, and it'll be in the minutes.
Okay.
But if we do, I can just have a signature sheet attached to it.
Yeah, we'll remove draft and then put effective date, expiration date.
So I would recommend the expiration date at this point to be none, because we want this to continue as long as the funding is available.
Yeah.
And right now, so as, as time goes on, we can revise it, and we would update that revision date, but the only thing we would really change is add the adopted date and that there's no expiration.
Then the other potential revision can be done, if we move forward with the rail trail, the design phase percentage will change.
Um, yes.
Well, it's 25, but that 25 is like 75. So they're, they're getting, they're real close to being 75% completed.
Right, so if it does change by town meeting, then we can change this document and notify it.
Well, town meeting doesn't need to vote on it, this is just the board.
Town meeting doesn't have to vote on it, it could stay like that.
So, yeah, so if it changes, we could certainly revise the policy.
That would be something that I would wish the state to see, so that in two years, you know, we're doing all the things that they would wish for us to be doing.
Right, well, they have their project number, and so they're close to 25%, aren't you, Mike? Yeah? Okay.
As he takes a bite.
Why, why you got you there?
Yeah.
Put a camera on Mike, please. I've just seen it, because you're on the camera in front of a public, can you just give a brief description of what's going to happen with 97? I don't think it's very, you know, I know the people on 97 know it, but what we're going to be doing out there, and a quick overlay of it, and timeline and what it is about?
97, well, it's going to start in roughly two weeks, around the, after the week of the 16th, the weekend of 15th, he's going to start putting signs up. We're meeting Wednesday, utility meeting, the offices in that Nicole's Plaza.
Okay.
The state engineer, the resident engineer, he's Ray Orsini, he's a nice fellow from, I think he lives in Beverly, he's a resident, and they're setting up now.
So they're going to, they're going to go from the Georgetown line to...
To Parker Road.
To Parker Road.
New drainage, new sidewalk, and new pavement.
Okay, all right.
Five million three hundred.
And you were, you were involved in all that, you carried it from...
Yeah, oh yeah, well, we had to obtain 40 easements.
Right, so you did all the work on it, you're probably happy to see that come online.
Yeah, it's been eight years.
Right, okay.
The money, you know, you get the money, but it's, you have to work for it.
All that money is federal, right?
Yes.
It's fully funded by the federal government, so the cost of the town pays.
Right, but it's, but the cost to town through Chapter 90 for the engineering.
For the engineering, yeah. But that stops now, doesn't it, we all done with that now, pretty much?
Well, we've got to go to phase two.
Oh, phase two.
Which we started a while ago, but I held up till we, phase one was completed. Once the construction started on phase one, then we'll go to phase two.
And phase two will go from Parker Road to downtown?
Yes.
Okay. All right, I just want to let the people know.
Yeah, so it's going to start, like, in two weeks.
So widening sidewalks, putting in handicap access ramps, that's the basic.
Handicap ramp, eight-foot wide sidewalk.
Eight-foot wide, on both sides?
No, one side.
One side, okay.
On the Bagnall School side.
Yeah, good, well, that's needed, big time.
And just by the Bagnall School, where the guardrail is, it's going to go to six, because we can't go any further, you know, there's no room.
Maybe we should put some speed bumps in front of the school too, slow people down.
Yeah, we couldn't on that road.
Spikes.
The speed regulations are kind of high.
They just come up in the morning.
Okay, so we're all set, thank you.
Well done, thank you.
I'm just going to get Sam.
That's a lot of work, good stuff happening with...
Do you guys want to talk to us? Got any 1.5 million?
That's under the, that's under the discussion, town, town law discussion. All right, we'll get there.
He's just finishing up on it, he'll be in in one minute.
We'll get there, want to start getting, go into the discussion, or we can do the...
Yeah, we want to do some votes, well, he should be in in a minute, so if you want to do some of those.
All right, so we got votes of the board, the minutes from the March 2nd, 2016 meeting,
Alright, so we got votes of the board, the minutes from the March second, two thousand sixteen meeting, minutes from the March seventh, two thousand sixteen meeting. And we have the executive session minutes from March second, two thousand sixteen. Alright, so CMT now. You want to vote on that or? Go ahead.
You wanna vote on that?
Yep. Can a motion accept those?
Do each one separately?
Um, let me see if everyone was here. Then you should not do them all together, you should do them separately.
So we'll do the March second, two thousand sixteen, first, are again a motion, accept?
So moved.
Second, any further discussion?
Any second on that?
I think it's seconded.
March, um, seventh, two thousand sixteen, can I get a motion to accept? So moved. Seconded by.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Dan, you were not present at that meeting, just.
Executive session minutes from March second, two thousand sixteen.
So moved.
Seconded.
I'll second that also.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
I'm staying.
So we have Sam Jaws and the building inspector to present the building department software solution. Thanks for coming in Sam.
Welcome, I hope it's a solution.
Does anyone have the packet with them? If not, I have extras. I just wanna make sure you have it, if he's referring to things. Okay.
Yes. Alright. Um, as you know, we're looking to upgrade the department, bring it into this millennium. We have storage issues. We also wanna try and accommodate contractors, homeowners, uh, realtors and get as much information online as possible. Transparency's a big word, uh, this, this is a great way for folks to see what's going on, they can sit home at their computer and take a look at it. Um, I, I have looked at, I don't know, probably about a dozen different software companies, uh, through my other town as well as here in recent, um, recent months. Point Software, uh, has a program called Permit Link. And they're, they're taking a different approach with the, the way they bill. Typically, you have to come up with a lump sum upfront to purchase your software. You do your data conversion, you get everything set up, you have user agreements, licenses for number of people that are, are users within the town. Permit Link's been around for quite a while now and they've decided that they were, they realized that was the biggest stumbling block in getting software to towns. Especially small towns like Groveland, we don't have, you know, twenty to forty thousand dollars just sitting around to say, here, you know, set us up. So what they've done is they've decided, based on the longevity of their current clients and how long they stay with them, by charging a user fee per permit, they do away with all upfront costs of the town. It is, it's a ninety day contract that they just have you sign, just so that they can get you set up, get in. After that, we're under no obligation to continue. So if we decide after ninety days, this is not the right move, we can just pull the plug. They're gambling that with the effort that they put in, the program that they have, and from what I've seen, it's a good program, that we'll stick with it. West Newbury has gone to this program, Newbury has signed a contract with them, Groveland, uh, Groveland, well, hopefully Groveland will be on board. Georgetown is also exploring it, or their building departments, um, in the initial stages of exploring it. So, one of the benefits, or there's, there's a number of benefits with this. You know, I, I don't wanna read them all, but at the same time, there, there's some significant changes that can be made to our department and to the town. Both for the town to benefit, contractors and homeowners alike. Customer service is, is the biggest thing, it's, the building department is then available twenty-four seven to them for submission of permits. Uh, they can sit at home eating their Cheerios in the morning and shoot it off to me. Soon as I see that from an electronic standpoint, which again, I don't even need to be in here. It's, it's a web-based system, so I can do it from my home computer, I can log in from my tablet, I can log in from my phone and approve permits at that time. So that permit turnaround time is much quicker. It reduces traffic flow in the town hall, so we don't have people in and out allowing me to spend more time doing other things. The other thing that we've had problems with in the past or concerns with is communication between departments. This creates an electronic sign-off with all the departments, so as they have submitted, excuse me, I send out emails to each department that's relevant. They get an email, can approve or not approve, make notes, it's instantly sent back. Storing documents, we've got a storage problem. We, documents are building up in the, the back corner room, they're gonna continue to build, Mass general law requires me to keep all my permits for the life of the building. I mean, that, that's a long time, it's not just a couple of years and we can ditch it, it's life of the building. We can't sustain retaining that paperwork, especially where also regulations are, are changing, requiring more paperwork be submitted. You know, in the seventies, you get, you know, you kinda had a handshake and a nod and a quick description. Now, you know, some of my permit files are two and three inches thick with, with the, the building permits that I'm getting. So we can electronically store all these documents, so no more, you know, build up of paperwork within the building department. This is gonna cover your, uh, building, which includes electric, plumbing, gas, trench, street openings and sheet metal permits. So all of them are available through this program. More accurate data conveyed over to our assessors, uh, so we get a more timely assessment of each house and the improvements as they go. Some of the taxpayers may think that's a detriment, cause yeah, they're gonna get taxed on their, their addition probably a little bit sooner than they used to, because we're gonna have real-time inspections. When I'm out in the field doing an inspection, as I hit pass or, or fail, when it hit passes, it automatically sends that information to the program so that the contractor at any time can look at it, see if they've passed or failed. If they failed, I can write in there, what you fa, what was the failure, so they're not trying to chase me down, uh, figuring out, you know, what the next step is. So that keeps their job site moving quicker. Again, on the flip side, it also lets the assessors know, there's a foundation in the ground here now. You know, there's a, you know, we're at the rough frame stage, where it's, it's completed, we've got an occupancy, so there's that instant communication piece. Meets our requirements under Mass general law for document retention, which is another, another big piece that, right now, we, we do and we do okay. Open permits, this is something we haven't been able to track really well in the past, so I come in, I pull a permit, maybe I get a rough frame and then I figure, you know what, I don't want the building inspector back, so I don't call him. What our current system is, is it's relying on the building department to try and remember all the permits that are out there. I can tell you right now, I'm not. I can't remember them all. This gives me a, a log as to what's closed, what's open, what's expiring and will, will give me kind of a, a reminder notice. Infield veri, verification of retention of permits, so as I'm driving down the road, if I see someone on the side of the road that's doing work, I can just pull it up real quick, see if they've got a permit or not, again, through my tablet where it's web-based. Then I can pull over, say to them, hey, you need to pull a permit. I could literally hand them my tablet and have them fill out the permit right there on the spot. So there's no having, he wouldn't even have to come down to town hall, uh, he could do it from his laptop, do it from his iPhone. Infield availa, availability of plans is another big issue that costs myself and the contractors a lot of time. When I get out to do a structural frame inspection, most of the time, the guys don't remember to bring the plans. Where those documents are already stored in the system, I can bring them up on-site, look at those plans, do my inspection in the field while I'm there. There's no need for a second site visit, no need for them to call me back and try and organize that, so again, both parties win in that case. Contractors, um, you know, I found in the other town that they're very happy to have these online permits. You know, a lot of them are resistant to use computers, but they're realizing that as more and more towns go to this, they have to do it. One of the benefits of this software where West Newbury's using it, Newbury's going to be using it, once you log in, you create a user account. So now when I come in, I sign into the program, I put my name in, it's gonna automatically populate my name, my business name, my phone numbers, my emails. It's gonna bring up my insurance information, my worker's comp and my license and attach it immediately to that permit. So I'm not having to re-enter all this, this information, having to have forms mailed in, sent in, emailed, it's already in our database. Same thing with homeowners, as they, as the contractor signs in the homeowner's name or puts in an address, it's gonna automatically populate that info. So now, what they have to do is very limited in scope as far as entry. Even the reluctant contractors, as they start using this, they realize how much easier this is to put in your name, have it populate. Put in the homeowner's address, have it populate, and then you're just putting in your scope of work and attaching documents. There are folks that don't and won't wanna use a computer, and that's fine, they can still walk into the office, say, here you go, and I can manually enter it. You know, that, and that's fine, it's absolutely acceptable, there's guys out there that do not wanna use computers, and I get it. The biggest thing with the contractors too is that instant communication, you know, did I pass or fail the inspection, what was the failure? And as I'm doing the inspection, I, as I hit that pass or fail, it just generates an email, sends it right out to them, generates a text message, however the communication is. They get that in hand and they're good to go, or know that they've gotta stop and make those corrections. So, you know, it really is essential the town starts moving this, in this direction. I think this is a extremely cost-effective way to do it. Now, the ten dollars per permit, I just wanted to give you an idea, so you'd, you know, you know, what, what's ten dollars in the scope of a permit? I took the August through December permits, cause I started in August, so I just took there through the end of the year. Our average job cost was, uh, twenty-nine thousand eight hundred and fifteen dollars. That's what, if you took all the numbers, divvied them out into the number of permits. So the percentage of job cost that comes out too, that's added by adding that ten dollars, is, uh, three, a little over three one-hundredths of a percent add-on to that. So it is fairly minimal as far as the, the cost to the, the applicant. I do have a grant also in looking for, uh, commercial plotter, which would eventually allow us to scan larger documents. In the meantime, most of those documents, if they're done by a professional engineer or architect, are already in an electronic format. They can just email them to me and be attached to the, the file. So it, it's, you know, I, I don't wanna tote it as the greatest thing since sliced bread, but for, for the department and moving us forward, I, I think it's, it's really a worthwhile program to, to bring in and, uh, start using.
One of the, one of the things was is when, if you remember when we hired you.
Mm-hmm.
One of my, my big things was is I wanted to bring that department up to the twenty-first century. And I think this is one of the steps that you're working on, but I think it's something that we definitely, uh, definitely could use and it definitely would bring us up to where we need to be, so.
Thanks.
Sounds like we're going in the right direction. Is there any more, is there any more thing?
Nope.
Uh, clearly benefits for the homeowner in the contract of twenty-four seven access, especially the status updates, not having to chase you down and.
Well, and that tends to be the biggest issue, is communications between all the parties. And this way, you've got a central location where the builder, the homeowner, the contract, you know, myself, architects, engineer, any, a neighbor. If the neighbor just wants to see, hey, you know, do they have a permit, how's it going, they can type in the address, bring it up and they'll know exactly where that contractor stands.
Biggest problem is, so if I'm putting on an extension, you drive by my house, you can actually now pull out your, a device and see if I have a permit.
Yep, are you, are you telling me something?
I'm gonna have to cancel that project.
What's your address?
No, um, what about, um, don't come by my house. Taj Mahal over there, but anyways, um, what about, um, does, do we, does it have an e-signature component? Do you need that or you're just talking about?
It is compliant with Mass general law for e-signatures.
Electronic signature.
And that's one of the things we make sure, it's also, uh, because of the way, well, two things, their prior, um, costing process, which was an upfront cost, was on the mass bid list. The way they do this, because it's a user fee and it's done through a revolving fund, they no longer need to be, but just, so you're aware, they, they were under the old system. So, you know, they're, they're a legitimate company that's been around for a number of decades, um, you know, with, with this software.
Where is the data stored? Cloud, uh, their website or?
Couple locations, we'll have onsite server plus our option to do an offsite, uh, cloud-based.
Yeah, we should have a backup, is that additional fee?
Who's onsite server?
Ours.
Ours, okay.
So we will have access to our documentation and we also have an outside source. That is not an additional fee.
That's really good. Last question, um, what, I know that there's a fee with a cap for extracting documents, a hundred dollars a document with a maximum, uh, fifteen hundred dollars. What would be the situation that would prompt someone to have to extract a document? I mean, it's not a common occurrence.
Yeah, no, and, and it was something that I had sent back because I, you know, I, I'm not, I'm not really a tech guy. You know, i- if you can't fix it with a hammer, it's electric. You know, and I, I don't understand that a whole lot. I had my, my admin in Newbury, who's also our IT person, contact him, ask him what, what and why we would need to do that. The answer I got was that it wasn't something that was common that we would need to do. That aside, I don't have a good answer for you, because again, it's.
If you could find out, not that that would hold up my support of it, but my, my concern would be that if we have litigation and some, uh, an attorney would, uh, you know, request a document that needs to be, you know, extracted, and we get stuck with the bill for something, who is, for someone's attorney who's opposing us.
Well, I think mo, all the documents that we enter and all the data entry is easily extracted and it looks like Denise may have a, you know, an, an IT perspective.
No, no, so just in their contract, it's only in the event that we terminate our, um, agreement with Point, that they would agree to provide us with all of the data and that's what the cost is associated with. So it's a fee of a hundred dollars per permit capped at fifteen hundred, um, per extraction occurrence. So if we wanted all of our permits, I believe they would charge us at most fifteen hundred or a hundred dollars per permit that we wanted to take back with us, cause we're terminating, is what that.
But you're, you're already storing a copy of that on your local server and a copy of that in the cloud, do you have all that anyways?
Yeah, so I mean, I, I don't. I, I would say that, you know, unless we'd lost the data and there was something other.
Yeah.
Again, it didn't, from, from my understanding and, and what my, my IT person had given me, was that it's not a likely scenario, but it's in there.
But for fifty dollars, you could get a terabyte hard drive to back up yourself again.
Right.
Pretty much.
Well, this is very well, very well done.
I'm, I'm excited about it, I, I'm hoping, uh, selectmen will vote to approve it and give Denise the authority to go ahead and sign the contract for the ninety days. Again, worst case after ninety days, if things are a nightmare, which I, I don't think they'll be, I've talked to the West Newbury inspector and his admin and other staff that have been using it, they absolutely love it, I've called the other references, um, I have not heard a bad thing about it. It's a local company, it's not outsourced, that's one of the problems I'm having with my current software in Newbury, is they decided to start outsourcing customer support. So when you call, you get, get someone from another country. It's not real responsive. The support on this is local, they have local branches, they've been local for, again, for decades. They have no plans on, you know, not being local in the near future, um, cause I asked that specifically, cause I do not wanna deal with someone that I can't, you know, pick up the phone and contact and have them drive to the office and fix it for me. So.
That timeframe from August last year, I know you did the medium.
Yep.
How many permits did you actually issue?
Um, it was only ninety permits, which.
Still a lot to keep track of.
It is, it is, and we're seeing that with a lot more visibility in town, um, there's a lot more permits starting to be pulled. And, uh, I think in March alone, I was somewhere around forty permits this year, so those numbers are climbing quickly.
So as the spring starts coming on, there'll be more permits.
Yep.
And that, that ten dollars is in addition to the already existing permit fees?
Correct, so existing fees stay, stayed the same, it's just a flat ten added on to that.
I mean, it's not a lot, so it's not like.
No, no, it, well, and the building department now is taking on electric, plumbing and gas permits, we're issuing them through that office just cause it makes more sense to have contractors come into one location, not go to the water department, over to the clerk, you know, to the inspector's home, uh, things of that nature. It's, it's what's expected, I mean, you know, some of the local guys were familiar with the process, um, and they quickly adapted. It was really the guys that were coming from out of town and I'd get just this flurry of people coming in all day saying, can I pull an electric permit? Can I pull a plumbing permit? And I just have to send them, send them away.
Yeah.
Now I'm accepting all that with this, again, this will make it easier, reduce that traffic flow even more, where they're gonna be able to sit home, submit it. Eventually, I wanna get it to a pay online status as well, which I'll work with Denise on that, it's not particularly difficult. So that these guys don't really even have to come into the office, they can submit it, I can review it, hit approved, they can print the permit at home. So again, that's gonna save us printing costs, if they lose a card, right now it's a, a fifty dollar replacement cost, they can go back home and hit print. Why it was a fifty dollar replacement cost, currently, if you lose the permit and you've had, uh, uh, excavate. Why it was a $50 replacement cost, currently, if you lose the permit and you've had excavation inspection, footing inspection, a rough, or a, a foundation inspection, rough plumbing, gas, electric, your underground electric, rough framing inspection, and you lose the card. I've got to go back and research each and every one of those inspections, make sure you passed, chase down each of the inspectors, have them sign it off. So, it's a lot of legwork. Because this is web-based and it will be instantly signed off when I'm standing there in the field, it will keep that record. So, anytime you want to sign that off in the field and print a new card, it will print it. So, again, there'll be no cost to the applicant at that point if they lose it. You know, I don't know how many sites have been on, because it's a nice stiff card, they use it as a dustpan, you know, and then it goes in the barrel after they're done cleaning up. Or the, they have it hanging on the wall, the, the drywallers come in and it stays in the wall. Transfer of permits, I just had someone in the office, it was $25 to transfer from one contractor to another. Because of the paperwork and administrative work we go through, at this point, you just go online, make that transfer, and it's done. It's, you know, it, it will eventually save us a lot of time, I think, a good amount of money, and be a whole lot user, more user-friendly for contractors and the folks in town, too.
I have one more. So, I'm gonna make...
I'll, I'll yield to Joe. Go ahead, Joe.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't even hear. Just quickly, if one of us makes a motion and we approve this, what really should happen is that we're gonna make a motion that says that we'll try this for 90 days, but about 60 days from now, you're gonna have to come in and tell us how it's working, so that we position this to be renewed without termination.
That's fine. And, and keeping my...
Otherwise, we're gonna be paying those retraction fees.
Right. And what I've done is, I want this to be set up for the first of 2017, just because I've talked to the company, and I'm, I'm having failing software in another town, I've, I've pushed them forward to get them on for the first of the fiscal year. By the time we get things squared away in this office, we're probably gonna be August, September, and I don't, I just don't want to start at an odd time of the year. I, I'd like to potentially bring it in at that time to get myself comfortable with it, kind of play with it a little bit, and then as, at the first of the year, release it to the public and have everyone use it.
First of the fiscal year.
Uh, first of the calendar year for this town.
Calendar year, January, okay.
Yep. So, it may not be 60 days from tonight.
Yeah.
But what we can do is come back at 60 days upon the start of implementation.
Implementation, okay.
And I can, you know, let Denise know when that is and get back on the agenda, just to, to give you a heads up, how we're, how we're doing, how it's going.
Thank you. Ed, Ed had a question or comment?
I, I'm, I'm really not prepared to vote on this tonight. I, I want to look it over, but if my colleagues would go along with it, I would like to see some comments from some of the homeowners, maybe even some of the contractors, the negative aspects of this.
Okay.
That, I'm sure that it, somewhere you had the towns that were, West Newbury, in Newbury, using the software.
Yep.
I'd like to see some negative comments on what people don't like about the program.
Okay. The homeowner, I don't think, you know, I don't know if I can get that info to track down a homeowner that may not be happy with it, but...
I'm sure that, I'm sure that you could, I'm sure that you could find 100 people that are, are positive about it. But I, I don't want to hear from them. I want to hear the negative stuff.
Yeah, you want to hear what the potential issues are.
What don't they like about...
Sure.
And I, I just have some of the questions and some of the costs in here.
Absolutely.
That's why, I'm not gonna bring it up now, but I'd just like to sit and look at this and, and get some comments.
Yeah, and again, we're, we're, I'm looking at a beginning of the calendar year date. We've got time, there's no, you know, there's no fire burning. I can certainly get you more info. I can reach out to the towns that have, have the service and, and see what they have for negative comments. You know, I have no problem with that.
Ian, you had something?
Yeah, just, Joe touched upon some of it, the extraction costs, make sure that we can have an independent backup, so that we're not incurring these $100 permit fees. It seems like there's enough permits. You said 90 in the last, whatever that period of time was, but they can terminate you if you use it less than three permits per month, so that's not, that's not...
No, no, no. If we do that, then, then I don't have a job here. You can send me off somewhere else.
Home. So, I want you to just make sure that that's, what are the circumstances where you would need extraction? I mean, why would you need that? Like Joe said, in a litigation system, I mean, can we print our own copies? Or every time you gotta go hit print, you whack $100?
No, 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 no. We, we have access to all this data. The extraction is in the case that our, our backup fails...
This is archives. If they had to access their archives, then they're, they're gonna charge you up to $1,500.
Yeah. Yeah, and again, you know, that's, that's 15 permits worth, but I don't see that coming to fruition at any time.
Is there money in the budget? There's a $600, it's not just a la carte here, is a $600 a cost for the license?
Uh, well, that's above your licensed users, so for each 100 permits we issue...
That's when you exceed the 100?
Right. Which, again, we won't, we don't have that many employees here.
Are you sure that's right? This is first year initial cost, $600 per user license.
But it says right above that, one license will be granted to client for each 100 permits issued at the base cost.
So, you don't have to pay the 600 at the base cost?
Correct. So, for, say I do a thousand permits a year, that gives us 10 user agreements. If we go beyond that, then it's $600 per user beyond. So, yeah, so again, there's, there's, we don't have that many people that'll be reviewing the permit. So, I, and again, keep in mind, this is electric, plumbing, gas, and building with those...
If you got an old timer, just, let's say you got a guy who doesn't own a computer.
Yep.
They got Plan B, they can come in and get a permit the old-fashioned way, come see you.
Same way they're doing it now. Come sit in a chair and sit in front of me and I'll...
We gotta do that, so, yeah.
Absolutely.
I've been on some websites and you get so frustrated, you can't print, it doesn't have some version of your software, your Adobe needs to be updated. I mean, it drives you nuts, you spend an hour on something that should take you five minutes.
Yeah, no, and I agree, you know...
At some point, you punt and you say, he, just give me a permit.
Yeah. Yeah, and again, for the guys that don't want to use it...
Yeah.
Nothing lost.
As long as there's Plan B, you know?
Most of your, your, especially plumbing, gas, and electric, it's a one-page permit application.
Yeah, once they go in and set up...
Yeah, so at that point, they're gonna be clicking like a plumber would be checking, you know, I'm putting in a tub, a toilet, a sink. That's it.
It makes sense for frequent flyers, you know?
And I mean, it's not ideal, like if you have, doing a, a full single-family home, there's gonna be more involved, you're gonna need to come in, we need to sit down, we still need to talk.
Because...
But your simple roofing permits, siding permits, things that are extremely straightforward, that these guys do every day, they, they love this type of thing, because now they don't have to pay a guy to come here, be their runner, go through all this. I mean, I just had, last week, someone came in, they charged the homeowner $300 to pull the permit, just to have them, have them show up. And with this, you know, I can turn it back on the homeowner and say, hey, have them go to this website, and, you know, at that point, have them justify why it's costing $300, because they don't have to, have to go anywhere, do much of anything other than enter some data.
Okay. In terms of permitting, somebody pulls a permit, how are they gonna know the setbacks and the, and the zoning requirements and, and things of that nature? And, and if you want to renovate your bathroom, say, I mean, how do they know whether or not you charge an additional fee for each fixture? Usually when you renovate a bathroom, you need plumbing, you need electrical, because you're tearing the...
Same as it is now, I'm just gonna get an electronic permit, so I still review every permit the same way I do now. I gotta go, you know, page by page.
So, if they miss a fixture in the bathroom, is that, you know what I'm saying? You're gonna say, you missed the shower, there's another, another cost for that? I mean, how, how does that play out?
I mean, stuff like that happens, and usually, you know, for, for the dollars and the, the effort to go back, if they made a legit mistake, you know, you just move forward. I mean, it really doesn't cost any extra for the, the plumbing inspector to come out and, you know, if you put up a, you know, an extra fixture.
Those are minor issues.
Yeah, yeah, you know...
Setback violations.
Setback, well, again, setbacks, they're gonna have to submit, still send in a site plan, still, still give me, everything is exactly the same, it's just submitted electronically, so my review's the same, nothing changes in that aspect.
Okay.
The only thing that changes, if they have something wrong, I have a faster means to get in touch with them and say, hey, this is wrong, you need to fix it.
So, basically, you shoot them an email or on that link, on that site?
Right, it's attached to your permit number, it's attached to that application, I can send it right out. So, if you send me an application that you're missing information on, as soon as I review it, I can check, you know, permit reviewed, you're missing, you know, A, B, C, and D.
The plan's inadequate, it's unlabeled.
Send those to me, and then we'll get you a permit. So, again, you know, it's a much quicker, rather than them trying to call and say, hey, did you get a chance to review it? They get into the habit of knowing, I'll just peek online, if it's reviewed, it'll be checked, if it's not, then, you know, I know to wait. You know, if I take too long, then they'll still be calling, but hopefully, this'll give me more time, so I won't take it long.
User-friendly, it'll be accurate, and you're still doing the same due diligence and checks and balances on it, so that, nothing's changed in that regard.
This actually, yeah, this makes it actually easier for me to do my due diligence, especially with other town departments, because again, if I need a sign-off from conservation, I can send this right over to them in an email, it'll open the, the file for them, show them all the documentation. And again, they can either add or, or just sign it off if it's all good, or add on to it. So, again, I get that instant communication, so where they're, especially conservation, the hours are limited.
Not to interrupt you, but I know one of our biggest problems in the town has been, what you just, you're talking about right now.
Yep.
We didn't have enough conversation between the boards, and we didn't have enough what was going on, who was doing what, and it was kind of a dividing line, and that's where things are getting messed up. So, on that aspect, I definitely think it's a win-win.
You won't have to go to the file cabinet.
Right.
Exactly. And, and we won't be generating any additional files, it'll just be, well, we will electronically, but no more physical files. So, I, I get probably one or two a day, realtors come in and want to see the jacket to see if the house that they're, they're selling has all the permits pulled. They'll be able to sit at home eventually, I mean, for now, with this, we still have the other files to deal with, but as things progress forward, they'll be able to just sit in their computer, look it up and go, yep, here's the permits, here's the sign-offs. If the bank needs a copy of the signed-off permit card, they can just hit print, and they've got it right there. So, it's not, you know, right now, they call, they check, I see what I have, I make copies, I either email it, scan it to them, they come in. It's labor-intensive, you know, I, I just pulled a file, there's about 60 pages, and they want me to copy and, and email to them. You know, and, and, you know, I'm allowed to bill them per page and per hour, and, but for the most part, it takes me more time to generate a, a bill and send it out to them than it is just to do it and, and walk away.
Yeah.
Ed, you want to say something?
Yeah. Look, I, I, Sam, I'm a firm believer in, if it's not written down, it never happened. And you're saying that a, somebody can walk into your office, into the old system, I want to see that written down. And that somewhere when we, when we do this, eventually vote on it, to have that written down. And, and I'll give you an example why.
Have, have what written down?
Written down the fact that, that, that they don't have to use this, that they could actually come in and see you and, and get it done.
Okay.
And, and the reason I'm asking the question, I've become very cautious with some of the information that I've, I've tried to extract here since I got elected, and it, it's very, you know, when you're looking for information, well, it's not written down. It, it's very convenient when somebody stands up to the podium, or stands up at the town meeting and says, this is the fact, but nobody ever writes it down, and so you've got nothing to go back on. If it's not written, it never happened, and nobody can, we could have 100 people who were at the town meeting say, oh, yeah, I, I remember, I remember they voted on that, I remember they said that, but nobody wrote it down, so it doesn't exist. And there's just been some things that I've tried to get, nobody ever wrote it down. Nobody knows how to get this information.
And I think with this, we'll have better documentation on all these, because it will be, you know, entered and signed. And again, yeah, any, anyone that does want to come in and do the handwritten application, absolutely.
But I want to see that part written down. I don't want, two years from now, somebody say, well, gee whiz...
Yep, it's electronic submission only.
What's that?
And in some towns, we've gone to that, where it's electronic submission only, where we won't accept a, a written. I don't agree with that. Again, I...
Neither do I.
I'm not a fan of...
I'm leaning to that, too.
Some technology, but...
Maybe the next generation, but...
Yeah, no, and again, I, I want people to be able to come in and do what they're capable of doing. If they're, you're not capable of entering it on a computer, come on in and, and, you know, I'll enter it for you.
That's why I want to see...
You don't need me to do it that way.
When, when we vote on it, when we...
Sam, I'll come in and write the...
Actually, Bill's the one I was thinking about with that, but I, I want to, I, I want to see it, on the, the stuff that we're gonna vote on, I want to see it written down that way.
Yep, I'll do a proposed...
Standard operating procedure.
Motion, or whatever you want to call it.
SOP for us to approve, you know, something like that?
100% towards automation, towards digital, towards everything.
Right, and again, and this is a system where we can have it both ways, which, which is nice, that it's that flexible, that it's not an all-or-nothing type of deal.
Especially where our town has been in the past, has been paper, paper, paper. It would be good to be, keep at the paper end of it, plus, you know, get it to the margin.
Well, and again, you've, you've got two, two age groups, and I mean, we can see the, the generations at, at the table right there, that, you know, I, I look at, you know, my...
You're all automated?
Ed, you know my father, he's, he's, he tries his hottest with computers, but, you know, I get the call probably every couple of days where, you know, I'm broken, I broke the computer and I don't know what I'm doing, come on over. You know, and again, I'm not that computer literate, but usually I can fix it, so I'm a step above him, and I know my nine-year-old's a step above me, you know?
Sam, kind of back on what Ed said a few minutes ago, have you had any kind of contact with any of the contractors that are either involved in this at all, or have you talked to anyone in the towns that is doing it, pros and cons at all?
I've been, with this, nope, the software's been around long enough. The problem is trying to talk to the contractors, so I'm, on this specific software, I'm relying on the feedback of the users within the town.
Right, right.
On other softwares, like the one I'm currently using in Newbury, I do hear the feedback, and it's exactly what Ed's saying. Some guys come in and we say, hey, you know, you can submit this online, and they say, you can submit this online, and they say, no, I can't, and I'm not going. And that, and, you know, we have no problem with that. Some folks come in and they, they're thrilled, and they say, oh, thank, thank God you've done this. Now I can, you know, I had an HVAC contract, he had 10 permits, that he was, he's pulling for the town all at once. And he goes, I, you know, he, he turned around, walked out the door, he goes, I'm going to do this tonight when I'm watching TV. This is great. So it, it definitely is a mixed bag, depending on your comfort level with a computer. I mean, if, if you're not comfortable with it, it's not for you. If you are, you know, it's excellent. So, you know, again, I can certainly write up some information for Ed as far as having it in writing that submissions can be done either way. That's up to us as the town, up to the selectmen, whether or not they want to accept that. I, I like being able to submit a written doc, you know, document, or having that ability for someone to be able to do that if they're not comfortable with it. It's, you know-
I, I can tell you, I did a drainage stop down in Ifitch, and we filled out the paperwork online. I went in to try and get my inspection. They said that it wasn't done right, and I said, I'll just come down and meet with the lady in the window. Didn't work. She didn't want to talk to me. Go back, Teresa had to go in. It's, it's involved, and not to have that paper, it's kind of hard. And it's just because I'm not good with computers, you know, but.
Right. And again, that's where I end up being the stopgap between you and the computer, so that if you're having trouble, it's no different than it is today. It's come on down, give me a call. A lot of, well, the difference that I've found, because we've had people using the other software where it shows the application submitted, maybe they're missing some stuff, and prior to them coming down, I can look at it and say, hey, when you come down, bring this, this, and this. So again, instead of them coming down, handing me the paper application and finding out that they're missing the info, they're coming down with the missing info. So that even, even they're saving a trip, you know, they, they might have failed in using the software. You know, some guys want to attempt it. And, and even if they fail, a lot of times, it saves them a trip with bringing info that they're missing. And then, like I said, some guys just come down and say, not going to happen, not going to do it, and, and that's fine, too.
All right. I'm good with everything. Mike, you good?
Mike's over here, I'm good.
I know.
Joe, let me, let me, let me, let me-
I'm off tonight.
Let me try a motion. Let me try a motion. And I, I want to respect also Ed's concerns. And I'll, I'll make a comment during the discussion phase, after I make the motion, if we get a second. So here's the motion. I'd like to, a motion for the adoption of the POINT software permit link web-based permitting program for the building department. Contingent on three things. Number one, that it is a 90-day trial. The second contingency is that the start date is set by the building inspector at his discretion. And the third contingency is that upon implementation, even during the trial phase, that you post on our website, the standard operating procedure of the building department as to the two pathways that one can engage to secure permitting, either electronic version or the paper version.
Yep, and I can do that, because we'll have a, when you go to the building department homepage, there'll be a link there, and I, at that time, I can easily put that, you know, you can either submit via the software by this link, or by permit, you know, paper permit, as, you know, Ed wants, so that it's, you know, in writing on the website, that it's a-
Completely transparent, everybody can see it, and there are two pathways, I can choose one or the other. So that's my motion.
Okay, someone want to second it?
I'll second it.
All right. My discussion point, and I agree with Ed, that we need to, you know, gather data, including potentially negative data. Maybe the owner of the company can provide some pros and cons, some things that he's picked up. But I can also say that we're going to build our own diet, data by having our, not probationary period.
Exactly.
So, and I, I know that you're a great communicator, and, you know, we, you, we enjoy a great working relationship with you. If you're going to get complaints, you're going to let us know about it, you know, before we re-up.
Yeah, well, I don't want to work with a failing system, or one, you know, I don't want to set myself up for failure. And, you know, I want it to be user-friendly. I want people to come in, pull the permits, be comfortable pulling those permits, whether it's electronically or in paper format. If they're not, they're just going to not pull them.
Right.
And that doesn't do me any good, it doesn't do the town any good, so.
But those three contingencies, and your ability to, you know, bring in more data from the owner and/or from our own experiences, I hope that the board will accept my, my motion.
Okay, well Joe has a motion on the floor, I've been seconded. Seconded in-
Discussion?
Discussion with-
It, Joe, I, I think, with all due respect, I think you're missing several points here. I'd said originally, I wasn't prepared to do it tonight. I wanted to read this over, study it a little bit better. I also wanted, before we voted on it, I wanted some negative comments from some of the other towns that, that have this. And I, I still, I'm not prepared to vote on this tonight. I, I'm not going to be able to support your motion. He's looking for this to be approved and go into effect January 1st, 2017. I don't see that there's any need to have to vote on this tonight. We got, what do we got, eight, nine months to go before it, uh, to affect? I, I don't see why we have to rush, rush into it.
Yeah, we're looking ideally to, for a setup data extraction, testing, probably want to be about five to six months before the launch date. So, yeah, we still have a, a couple of months, so it's not imperative that we-
Twenty time. I, I can't support your motion, Joe. I, I think we're, we're jumping into this, and I'd just like a little more time to think about it.
No, and I don't have a problem with that. I, I'd much prefer to have the board's unanimous support, and answer their questions in moving forward. So if, if getting some additional data gets us there, happy to do it.
I would be okay with that.
I'd, I'd ask Joe if you'd, if you would withdraw your motion.
Table offer.
Hold on, I'm trying to, what, what did you say, Mike?
I said, I would be okay with that philosophy, if it was going to cost us $50,000. It doesn't cost us anything.
No, it's, it's a user-driven-
Other than a $10 surcharge on existing fees. If after three months, we don't like it, then we cancel it. It's not like we're out $50,000, and we're out $100,000. We're out some permitting fees.
Yep.
Dan, how do you feel about it?
Well, I, I hear what Ed's saying. I mean, it's just, what's the timeline on it? And is there a conversion cost in terms of your time for setup? So, hey?
They do the conversion, it's part of their setup, they get it up and running, convert the data, do training. It is, it is truly a no-cost, if we stay in the parameters, again, with users and whatnot, which we will.
How long would it ta, I mean, I, I wouldn't mind, you know, checking out some reviews on the software myself independently, you know?
Sure, sure. You know, do, I'd be glad to come back in two weeks and-
Haven't been able to do that this week, you know, I'm busy in, in my practice. But, you know, if we could table it for, you know, a month, would that set you back in your timeline? But I, I want to give to, some respect to what Ed says, that if he's not comfortable with it, I mean, you know, there's a catch-22, I don't want to dilly-dally or drag feet, but on the other hand, to make, make quick decisions if you, if you're not comfortable. Similar to like the environmental restrictions. If I don't know anything about it, I'm going to pump the brakes, and it's not that, I'm dragging feet on it. It's like, if you don't know what you're doing, stop. So-
So right now, we have a motion on the floor.
So I'd, I'd like to table it for, can we table it for 30 days? You can give us some more information. I mean, I don't want to waste too much time, you know, I don't want to have analysis paralysis on it, but I, I'd like a little more information myself, so.
From my, to add a comment, if you're done, are you done?
You with me? And, and, and you might be more savvy with the technology, but I'm pretty savvy with being frustrated with technology. Yeah, I've tried to, you know, download forms from, you know, various, you know, the probate family court or the registry deeds. And, and I go on there one day, and it'll work, and then I'll go on there a week or two later, and for some reason, it doesn't work. So I, you know, and you can't yell at, yell at the screen, it doesn't do any good.
I've accidentally broken some electronics before.
It's not like you pick up 1-800 and you get a, you know, customer service, oh yeah, you got to click on this icon, and it's like, where was that?
Mike wants to say something.
So, so this is my two cents on technology there.
Yes, I am a technology guy, right? I take notes on a laptop, I work with software every day. From what I read, it is not curing cancer, it is not huge learning curve, it is strictly just a application that you use. It's not a huge database, it's not a huge expense. There is nothing wrong with doing technology, right? It makes it easy for you.
Yeah, you, you're taking a fill-in paper form and having it-
Right, if you don't like it, do the paper form. Okay, it's not, we're not cutting everything off.
So what I'm going to do, at this point, is I'm going to make a friendly amendment, and I'm going to ask that you return in two weeks, if you can answer all the questions that were brought up by the board as far as the contractors, et cetera, et cetera. If you can bring those back to us in a couple of weeks, we can get them answered. I would feel better about moving on from there.
Yeah, like I said, I, you know, I'd, I'd like to make the board comfortable, you know, there is no-
So here's what I'm going to do, I'm not going to accept that friendly amendment, because otherwise, we have to vote for it. So I'm going to withdraw the motion.
Okay.
End result is, we'll see you in a couple of weeks.
So a table, a couple of weeks.
Table for two weeks.
Thank you.
All right, thanks for coming in, thanks for your time.
See you in two weeks.
Thanks.
Okay, so moving on, we are going to have discussion and vote to approve the town meeting warrant. And I know we had a couple of things we needed to go over, right Denise?
Yes, so I've given you all revised warrants that shows how the board voted. There's a couple of changes that I will bring to your attention. We received, I actually received today the chapter 90 number, so in the annual town meeting warrant, article two, we had a placeholder with the current year's number. They're actually only giving us $600 more for fiscal '17, but I did adjust that to be the correct number.
Six hundred.
$600 more. But it's more, I guess, that's a good thing.
Should buy that software, we just shut down.
I did put in, just so you could see the budget, it does not have the finance board, they're supposed to be voting tonight. So once they vote, their recommendations will be in there.
Are they going to vote tonight?
They are planning to vote tonight, because they will be, they will not have a quorum the rest of April.
Okay.
So they need to vote tonight. The other change is one of the articles, so let me actually start with article number 17, I believe it was, Whittier, 16. So that was one of the articles you did not vote on last week. I did meet with Whittier last Thursday regarding, and I asked him about the stabilization account, and their response was barring any unforeseen emergencies, they don't see having the town's assessment increase to fund their stabilization account. Their plans are exactly what I explained, to use their excess and deficiency funds, which is similar to free cash, to put it into a stabilization account. They are one of the only schools around that does not have a stabilization account. So if something catastrophic were to happen, they would then have to come back to the towns, because they don't have any savings. So I will say, they only need a majority of the communities that participate in Whittier, which is, I believe, a six. And they feel strongly that the cities that are in the program will support it, because the cities like to fund stabilization accounts, is what they told me. So they don't expect it to increase our assessment anytime soon, again, barring any unforeseen emergencies. So that was article 16. I don't know if you want to stop and discuss it, or if you want me to keep going, Bill, however you want me to.
Yeah, do you want to start at the front, or move away forward?
Well, you've already voted on articles one through 15.
Okay, so we'll start.
So that's the first one that you haven't, that was the first one that you had not voted on. We could certainly go through any of them that you want to.
Just the ones that we haven't voted on.
Yep. So that one, you, is the first one you had not voted on.
So I'm a little unstrat.
Okay.
So if we vote for it or not, it can still be forced upon us by the, with the majority of the cities and towns that are in the district.
That is correct.
The technical school district.
The Whittier.
Whittier.
Whittier Regional Vocational School, that is correct.
Okay, does anyone have a, have any more further discussion on this? Are we willing to make a vote on it?
We have no control over the, over the funding of it.
Right. So.
Yes, it doesn't really matter what we do.
If we vote, if we vote against it, and all of the other participating towns vote for it, then it's imposed on us anyways, and it's-
Do you have any idea, does anybody have any idea if the regional agreement is silent on the, on the matter?
So to my knowledge, the regional agreement, it's, it doesn't address stabilization, but that's what states that it's the majority of the communities. So if our town meeting passes it or doesn't pass it, like I said, they only need six communities out of their 12 to approve this. And that's what the regional agreement talks about, voting.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Do you have something else, Dan?
No.
All right, so I guess we're going to, we'll vote on it, and vote from there. So we're going to vote on number of article 16 as it's written, on the Whittier Regional Vocational Article. Can I get a motion to accept?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt article 16 as written.
And can I get a second?
Seconded.
And any further discussion? All in favor?
If it's possible to have a copy of the regional agreement with that language highlighted, so that if we have a challenge or a question on the floor, we can adequately address it.
Yes, the superintendent is planning to be at our town meeting, in case there are questions on it. She, she will be present, yes.
A new one, that's right.
Yes.
What was the next one?
Yep, so the next one is, I believe it is, it is article number 26. And that was the Johnson's Pond discussion. The article that's in your current version of the town meeting is the revised number. I sent you all, after that discussion last week, Mike Dempsey had sent revised numbers that would only clear a portion of the water lilies instead of the whole area. So he did provide revised budget, he did suggest a lower number from the $73,650 down to 48,000, 41,850. So this article reflects the new number, and that was the next one you were holding up on.
Well, I know we, I know that we had talked about table in this for this week. I did do my due diligence. Me personally, I'm not in favor of it, spending that kind of money, taking out, taking out lilies that would probably go back in a season, so I'm not in favor of article 26, 26 myself. I'll make that known. So, anyone else want to make a motion around?
Dan, didn't you say something, like it would be better if we just use the boats to drag through it on normal uses, that would-
Well, I mean, that's my personal opinion, you know, you know, I'm a boater, and I, like, a recreational fisherman, and I've been in and out of that pond. And like I said in the last meeting, I've used a Penticott pond, and it's, have a boat ramp over there that's made out of mud. And, you know, there's a channel there, and you get through the weeds just from usage, you know, you paddle through, or you, I just don't think we need to spend money to remove water lilies. And I, my, my primary concern, you know, usually I'm fighting over money, but it's not even the money issue on this to me. It's, it's a habitat for fish. And water lilies are not an invasive species, they are a, a, a natural plant that grows. It's very shallow over there, and wherever you have shallow water, you're going to have water lilies growing. So unless you change the depth of that pond, which, you know, there's pros and cons of that, it could create flooding for butters to the pond, you know, unless, unless you increase that depth, then those weeds are going to grow right back. So you're going to spend money twice. So, you know, they could try dredging it out and going deeper on a channel, but you've got to go pretty deep for sun not to penetrate water into, grow back weeds. So that's just my practical life experience on the pond type of situation. So I don't think it's going to work if we spend $41,000, or $400,000, or $400 on it. I think you're going to have weeds back there next year. So I'm with Bill. I mean, I think, Bill, you mentioned the last meeting, you have some experience-
I have experience, because-
Real-world experience with some camps up north.
I was involved in a 150 watt subdivision in Maine, and we spent about, I want to say about $120,000. We did the whole pond. The pond fed Sebago River, Sebago Lake, and it didn't work. And like I said, within two years, they were back. They'd go out there with scuba divers, they'd pick them with scuba divers, they spent two years on, they finally trashed it. It just, it's, when you're in shallow water, under seven feet of water, they're going to come, and they're going to come real, real aggressively. So I don't believe, it's not a dollar amount with me, it's just, it isn't going to work. And, and that's my opinion.
The, the, the process also creates aeration, which could actually increase water lily growth after the removal of the initial water lilies. So the only way to really control is with the level of the water, and I agree, that's kind of, kind of dangerous.
You'd have to get every little seed, every little root, every little-
It's kind of dangerous to mess with that.
You've got to get it all out of there, 100%. You can't do, you, you can do a canal, like, like I think this new proposal is, you can do the canal, but you'd have to do that canal every couple of years, because it grows in. It's just very invasive. It's an invasive plant, and it will grow in, especially when it's shallow. It's very, very invasive. I wish we didn't spend the money when we did it in, in where we were about, we tried it.
Well, I look at it, it's the same thing as you put crabgrass preventer on your lawn, you got to do it the next year.
Right.
And a year after that. But, yeah.
Go ahead.
But to answer Mike's question, I mean, yeah, with usage, if you just paddle through there a few times, you're going to make a channel.
Right.
I mean, and maybe that would encourage people to go down there and use it more. Because you get down there, I see Mike's point, you get down there, it's all, it's all weeds. You say, where am I going to put the canoe or the kayak in? And the answer is on the other side of the pond, when there aren't any weeds. So-
Well, I don't think they're letting too many people in there right now, anyway.
So if you, if you cleared a path through there, that people could see it, I think you, the more use would keep it open. So I, and I don't think you need to spend anybody on that.
Okay, go ahead.
So I just wanted to comment, the budget that Mike did send you all, the revised budget. So the $41,850, just so you know, the $8,700 is removing water lilies, and $4,200 is removal and composting of lilies. The rest of the money was for other things. So just, if you are going to vote on this one way or another, just either vote on, you know, the dollar amount, or amend it to remove that piece, or if you're not going to support it altogether. I just wanted to point out those differences in what he submitted for the project.
So what was the water lily portion, 12,000, $13,000?
Uh, yes, $8,700 for the removing, and removal and composting of lilies. I don't know if that's the same-
That was 4,100?
4,200 was that piece. Everything else is-
Do you want to make a motion, Mike, you want to?
What's the other breakdown?
Yeah, I was just going to say, what's the other breakdown of things that he was-
Uh, it should be in your packet, because I did include it. But it has prepared plans and permit filings for potential picnic areas and enhanced boat launch. And that is $30,650.
What picnic areas are we talking about?
Um, he has, "Build a new picnic area along the east shore at VZ Park to increase passive recreational activities and rehabilitating the current picnic area at Lower Center Street to address erosion over the effects and use of illegal boat launching." So it's two different picnic areas that they were looking to, one to create and one to rehab. $10,000 is for materials for the picnic area. $3,000, and then actually, oh, some of the, oh, I'm sorry, I think I have the wrong number in the budget, actually. Because then they have matching funds. Oh, so the total request is 41,850, but then they're looking at $3,000 coming from the open space fund, 4,500 coming from grants, and then 4,200 was going to, is offsetting the disposal of the lilies. So it's actually only 8,700 is the lilies.
I have another concern.
Total, yes.
Not 87 plus 4,200.
Correct, no, because they were offsetting.
I have another concern in regard to this, and then like Ed mentioned previously about some things don't get written in town. I'd like some assurances or in writing, that this is not going to be a replacement of the Lower Center Street picnic area and the, and the public use access of that area. So it's not going to be a replacement, because I, I'd like to, like, like to get some assurances.
So that's right in the town meeting warrant. So I'm reading right out of the warrant, the explanation. It's, "Building a new picnic area along the east shore at VZ Park to increase passive recreational activities and rehabilitating the current picnic area located its lower center street to address erosion, overuse effects, and illegal boat launching." So it's right in the description that people would vote, vote on, that it's used, in addition to building a new one, to rehab the current- in addition to building a new one to rehab the current...
But in terms, terms of the boat usage, though, when he says illegal boat usage, what is he talking about? Because my understanding is that Lower Center Street, you can carry in and carry out kayaks and, uh, uh, God motorized, uh, uh...
I think the, I think...
So is he planning on stopping the use of, uh, uh, boat access over there at Low, Lower Center Street?
I, I don't believe so.
The, uh, the dragging of the boats through, not carrying or wheeling or whatever.
How do you monitor that? I mean, I carry what I can do on the top of my truck, you know, on racks.
I have no idea.
Sixteen foot, uh, kids grab one and I grab the other. And to say that we never drop it on the ground, we drop it on the ground.
So, in the rehabilitation, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but in the...
Mary, let's go.
In the rehabilitation of the Lower Center Street, it sounds to me like what's been before, it's before, the shoreline erosion. And it's the, well, putting the boats in. So, the way that I heard it, and the way that I understood it, they don't want any launching down there. They don't want any people down there. They don't want any fire pits down there, and they don't want anything down there. So this is not really explaining to me that the fire pits are going back. They're gonna put picnic tables and they're gonna really make a, an area down there for people to go boat launching. It sounds to me like it's kinda where they were going originally with it, and that's just how I read it.
Well, I mean, they, they do identify the picnic table area. So they plan to rehab the current picnic area. I mean, that's, he put that in the article description, so...
Is the primary push for this a new place to launch boats? And they're gonna close the boat access on the other place? I'm not clear on that based on the language in this warrant. And so I'm not gonna support it until I know that you can launch boats from Center Street. And they don't have a plan on prohibiting that, 'cause I do not support, I do not support that.
Just a, you got, looks like Groveland Highway Department, removal and composting of the lilies. They're okay with it?
No, so that's what, if you look above, it's, like, apparently forty-two hundred was to dispose of it, but the highway, if they did it themselves, um, but that would offset the upper cost. Those are sort of the matching funds that come off of the price of the project. So if you're not removing the lilies, you won't need to compost them.
So, so forty-two hundred dollars to compost them?
Yeah, off-site material disposal, forty-two hundred.
Dump 'em in a pile and let 'em rot?
But then it's the, instead of, I guess, using that service, it's the highway department would deal with it.
I know in Maine...
She'll take 'em for free.
I know, um...
Come up and sign something.
Do you want me to get Mike? I think Mike's in his office. I don't know, do you want?
I don't have, you wanna get Mike in here?
That'd be a good idea.
Dial him up, I mean...
Oh, I think he's across the way in his office. I can go, um, see if he's over there.
Uh, uh, you know, a lot of assurances, they're not closing boat access on Lower Center Street. There you go.
So the highway department...
What are you gonna do with them?
I have a coin plan.
Oh, there you go. Know what you're doing for free?
They're like forty-five dollars for a lily.
Really? Why don't we sell them?
We're going the business.
Boy, they saw you coming.
We could pay off Center Street with them. Forty-five bucks a piece, I'll sell them on, at the airport, you know?
Okay, Mike.
Yes.
We're discussing the Johnson Pond article.
Yes.
And a lot of us aren't clear on it.
Okay, so, did you get the revised budget that I emailed? And so, after last week's meeting, um, I went back and made some changes to address some of the, um, things that, uh, Dan brought up about, instead of, um, instead of, uh, clearing the lily, water lilies out of the entire seven acre portion, what the company is gonna do is only clear a portion of the shore and then a, uh, a path out to the main part of the pond. So it ends up being about one acre.
The questions that we had, we've got about that point, or we've got that...
You got that, okay.
We're beyond that point.
Okay.
We're at the point right now of discussing, um, the Lower Center Street, um, part of this.
Yes.
And, and the boat launching part at VZ.
Okay.
Try to clarify what you're gonna actually do at each one of those locations.
Okay.
And part of the question was just brought up on the Lower Center Street. I was under the assumption, talking with you before, that you guys were trying to stop the shoreline erosion. You were trying to stop people from going through there with, to, to stop, you know, they were causing the erosion, and you guys were trying to stop that. And I guess I'm not correct on saying that. So, we need you to clarify, we have an issue with the fire pits, it still hasn't been resolved. And Denise thought maybe that was renovating that area. So we're trying to get what's gonna actually happen there.
Yes. So, this proposal, what this proposal is gonna do is, um, enable us to file the permits to do two things. One is, on the Lower Center Street side, to go and potentially fix some of the erosion problems over there, fix any changes that the commission wants to do to the, to the picnic area, whatever it is that we, we end up voting. So, it really doesn't say specifically what we're gonna do, but it enables us to get the permits to do it. Because we haven't been able, we've never filed permits for over there. So, so that's gonna enable us to do that. And in addition to that, the second thing it's gonna do is to be able to file the permits and plans for putting another picnic area over on the VZ, bottom of VZ Park side, along with either an observation deck or a dock and, uh, as I say, a small picnic area over there. So primarily, um, the, the CPA funds are gonna be used for planning and permitting.
Okay, so we're not gonna get any actual installation? It's more of planning at this point in time, the money we're spending?
Right, we, the commission is gonna have to come up with other money to do anything that we decide to do, yes.
Okay, all right, you answered all my questions.
Yeah, and just as a reminder, that the commission has jurisdiction over that. Yes. We don't. I have a question. Meeting the board of selectmen.
Are there any plans on you, um, prohibiting boat access? So is this a, gonna be a replacement for Lower, uh, Center Street in terms of kayak and, uh, and canoe access points on, uh, Johnson Pond?
No, what we hope to do by doing the, what we're gonna propose on, on the VZ side is to really basically increase access to the pond. Because right now, the only access to the pond is either a, at the bottom of VZ, which is poor access, or on the Lower Center Street side, there's, again, that small area through the picnic grounds that people bring their boats in. So, we're hoping that by fixing the erosion controls over there, making it better and emphasizing for hand-carry boats only over there, and then increasing the access on the VZ side to allow, uh, people to, to potentially bring boats in there that they can't do now because of the water lilies, that will, it will increase access to the pond. So we're not, we're not trying to restrict, restrict it further, we're trying to make it better.
So, for instance, over Lower Center Street to reduce erosion? I mean, if you had some sort of rock...
Yes.
Walkway there.
Yes, something like that.
You know, field stalls or something like, along that line, like a patio walkway type of thing, and some steps down.
Yes.
You would stop erosion if you had some steps.
Right, because what people do now, they're, they're putting their boats and dragging them in.
So you get some s- s- silt into the water.
Right, exactly. What type of illegal boat launching, um, prevention measures or restrictions will you try to affect through permitting? Well, I believe that on both sides, really what is supposed to be permitted is only hand-carried boats, according to the state. According to, when the state came in and put, um, the, when they did the work that they did at the low, lower part of VZ Park, what they requested was, and the sign that's there says it, that only hand-carried boats are supposed to be going in there. And so, I've worked, tried to work as closely as I could with Groveland Police so that they're aware of that restriction and that people are primarily doing hand-carry only, which are basically kayaks and small canoes.
What, what else has been in there? I've never seen a...
Some people, well, some people are putting trailers and pushing the boats in off their trailer, both on, on both sides. It's difficult to do it on the VZ side, but on the...
On a sailboat or something?
No, they're mostly rowboats.
Not a lot of room to get down that pathway.
No, there isn't, I mean...
And then they put the big boulders there, so you can't even get in there.
I know.
So it may have been two years ago before the boulders, but it doesn't exist anymore.
No, I think the restrictions that were put in on Lower Center Street have helped.
Good, I, I'm, I'm clear on everything now.
Right.
Mike, just a couple things. If you, if you remove, remove the, the lilies...
Yes.
Make it accessible to people with boats.
Yes.
Aren't you looking at the same problem that you have over on Lower Center Street? Like Dan just said, uh, you know, he's got hand-carried boats. At some point, you, you're gonna, they're getting heavy, you're gonna put 'em down, you're gonna drag 'em. I, I just think you're gonna run into the same problem over there.
Well, again, um, at the Lower Center Street side, it's the same problem there. There's no erosion protection there. So what we're gonna have to do is either put some kind of dock in or riprap on the shore to prevent, you know, if somebody does drag them in. But on the VZ side, there are boulders already in place, so it's more difficult to, to drag anything in there.
And I know, I, I had asked you about, uh, some kind of a dock affair down on the lower part.
Yes.
And I, I think that would take care of some of the erosion. I know that there's, uh, last summer, there was three or four, maybe three, uh, good-sized canoes over there. And they're, uh, I think they're chained to a tree.
Yes.
And, uh, so they belong to somebody in the area. But you, you, you can't tell me that those are, are carry-in. There, those, those, there's no way. So, uh, I, I just see that the same thing's gonna happen over at the lower VZ Park than it's happened over on Center Street. Unless you do something to, uh, stop those larger boats from going in there.
Yes, it's a constant...
I was asked about the, I was asked about the, the dock affair.
Yes.
Similar to what they have down in Georgetown, where they could pull up and actually physically lift the boats up, the canoes or the kayaks up onto the dock, and then just from there, they could bring them up on shore with no erosion. And also, when you're addressing Lower Center Street, uh, are you gonna, when you do that, are you gonna put those, those grills back in?
The, um, commission, I believe...
Mike, Mike, simple question. Yes, you're looking at it, or no, you don't wanna put it in?
No, we're still looking at it.
Well, how about, can, can you, uh, specifically in this particular article, address it? So, you know the feelings of the selectmen, they wanna put back in. Can you address it so that they get put back in, in, in that particular article?
In this, we, I'm not sure I understand what you want me to do.
Uh, uh, to increase passive recreational activities and rehabilitating the picnic area location at, at Lower Center Street to address erosion, overuse effects, and illegal boat launching. And add, and, put the grills back in.
When you talk about renovation, when you talk about renovation, maybe you'll be a little more specific on a renovation, you know?
It's plain English.
Make the picnic tables accessible, the fire pits accessible.
Right.
You, you talk about renovation and you lead me, I'm only just saying me, to believe the way I read that was you were gonna renovate it to be a picnic area.
Well, yes.
But now after, hold on, now after the discussion, I feel renovation is for the shoreline erosion problem, and that's how it's, we're not, we don't have any idea here. The commission hasn't talked about it yet, on putting stuff back. So if I'm gonna vote on this, I'm gonna vote on it. If we're gonna, if we're gonna renovate it, we're gonna renovate it. If we're gonna fix the shoreline, we're gonna fix the shoreline. And that's how I wanna go with it, and that's, that's how I would vote. So I don't think this is worded enough for me to vote on this article. It's not spelling out enough what's going on. And I know, um, you know, the wording looks like we're gonna renovate it, but I don't see a full renovation going on there. And, and the other place as well, I talked to these guys before you were here. I'm not up for pulling the lilies out, even in a pathway. I think we'll be in there two years later, pulling them out again. I think it's a waste of money, and I, I can't support that as well.
Well, let me just say that if we...
Will they grow back?
Would, would you, would you entertain the thought of, um, to increase passive recreational activities and rehabilitation, and rehabilitating the current picnic area location at Lower Center Street to address erosion, over, uh, use effects and illegal boat launching, and to restore the, um, picnic tables? Or you can word it rehabilitating the current picnic area to include the restoration of the picnic, excuse me, of the grills, fire grills, at Lower Center Street, and also to address erosion over use effects and illegal boat launching? Because if we, um...
Yeah.
If we do that, we'll get the grills back in, but then we'll kinda leave everything else alone. For you to do what you're supposed to do, which was what this article is asking, is to provide a funding source and open it up to permitting.
Yes.
So... Well, see, on purpose, I was not specific about what we were doing. Because I'm trying to keep it so that it's broad enough that it's able to address whatever the commission decides to do. So this project really has to be broad enough in scope that if the commission decided to change things completely at VZ or the Lower Stre, Center Street side, it would incorporate and give us the ability to permit whatever the commission came up with. Because the commission hasn't made its decision yet, so I... Again, he, the, the commission has the authority and the jurisdiction over it, and the permitting will also allow for public comment and such as, when you finally get to the point about the grills.
I would get it, I sit here in this chair, and I look at it that I did the wording for a certain way, and I look at it, once it gets voted in, the wording went the way they wanted it. And the wording's gonna be, the way it's written, it's vague, and I can't go with it. I want it spelled out more, and I wanna spell out what it talked about. Listen, if we put the real trail in, we talk about the real trail. We, we, beginning of the project, we talk about specifics. This, I don't wanna hear it's vague, I just don't wanna hear it. I want specifics. There's been too much talk about this whole piece of land and what have you. I want articles before me that spell out what's happening, and that's it. And we talk about a renovation problem, project, and I go out and vote for it, and then we don't get the renovation project, we only get shoreline erosion fixed. Well, where's, where's my park? They're in here complaining to us. You know what I mean? If I was a homeowner and I read this article, I would sit there and think, hey, we're gonna get Lower Center Street renovated. And, and it's just, it's, I don't like it, I just don't. Go ahead.
I, I, I think, you know, I agree with Bill. If it is vague, here's the thing, the conservation commission has jurisdiction and authority over this. And that's fine. But if the people of Groveland are gonna vote for an appropriation, which is what they're doing, it's spending the taxpayer money, they want assurances as to what are they gonna get for their money in terms of public access, and that may be the grills. You have control over the grills, you have control over whether or not the picnic tables stay or they go. You have control over whether or not you allow kayaks or canoes in there. You, you can do that.
Right.
But I, I'd be comfortable with, if you tied, you coupled what it is you're going to do with the appropriation, then somehow it, 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 um, it gives the taxpayers and the voters in this town some input into, into it. And that, not to take away authority or jurisdiction over conservation, but I, I don't feel comfortable voting for something, you spend money on it, and then conservation's a, a, an appointed body, and they say, no, well, now you can't use it 'cause there's too much erosion over there. And then people are gonna say, well, what did we spend the money on? I wouldn't have approved it had I known that I couldn't put my canoe in over there. And that's my concern. I won't vote for this if you say, you know, we're gonna block public access to this because of erosion.
Well, I don't...
So, so how, how can we get some assurance that it's gonna be a recreation area?
The commission is not in the business of preventing people from using conservation lands. I don't know where that's coming from.
We can't even get a decision from the commission to talk about grills. We can't even get that decision.
We did have it, we did, Bill.
Now we look back to the fire chief. It's gone back to the fire chief. We need to get a letter from the fire chief.
No.
Listen, listen to me, hold them on a second. If you take the Washington Park, they talked about swing sets, they talked about parking lots. They broke that project down and they explained everything they were gonna do there. That's all I'm asking right here. That's all I'm asking. I want a better explanation.
We, we don't wanna, we don't, and my opinion is, we don't, we don't want to, we as a board do not wanna infringe on the sovereignty and the authority of the commission. But what makes the, the article defective is that, exactly as Dan has mentioned, is that there's a component here where we're asking the town meeting to appropriate funds. And once...
And once you get into that business, we have to deliver an itemization of how those funds are going to be spent and on what. So it's almost self-defeating, because you're looking for it to be broad enough so that the commission can do their work, and that would have been great if there wasn't a financial component to it. So that's.
And we did it on the ladder truck.
That's the problem.
I mean, not to bring it up, we did it on the ladder truck. We voted, went to town meeting, we voted for a ladder truck. Okay, and I've taken the blame, I'll take the blame again. We didn't even know how we were going to finance that truck, and then we had to come back here for four months to decide and talk about a ladder truck, and we didn't even talk about the financing. So all I'm saying is, I want specifics. I should have had specifics on the ladder truck. I wasn't in charge then, I wasn't a chairman, you know, whatever, I was green, whatever. I just think that we need to spell this out better. That's all I'm saying. I just, I'm not trying to.
Otherwise, we get a false start.
Right, and I don't.
And there might be some misgivings if people think they voted for something, and then they get something else. That's all.
Right, that's all I'm saying.
You know, and will that, I call it dredging. Will that muckraking or whatever they're going to do there to remove the.
I'll tell you, really, that was very Trump ass.
Oh, muckraking.
Trump peace.
Will they guarantee this stuff won't come back next year? Is it going to be an ongoing maintenance thing? Will it require ten, fifteen thousand dollars a year to maintain it annually? So, again, my gut feeling is, well, we don't know until we try. But more than likely, it's coming back.
All right, let's, go ahead.
I concur with Bill about, you don't have much information on it. But you mentioned the fact that you wrote it vaguely. And I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, if I misunderstood you.
Yes.
Correct me. But you wrote it vaguely so that the commission would have leeway in the way they attack the area?
No, depending upon what the commission decided, we could do whatever is necessary from a permitting point of view. So if the commission decided that they, you know, wanted to have a big extensive passive recreation area put over there at the foot of VZ, that we could do that. But can I say that that's what the commission has decided to do? No, I can't, because they haven't decided to do that yes or no yet. The same thing with the other side. If the commission decides to, you know, build an expanded picnic area over there, maybe we will, and then we'll have to permit it. Or maybe we will leave it the way it is.
I thought looking at it a different way.
Shouldn't that be submitted now, though? I mean, why couldn't they vote on that, exactly what they want to do, and just submit the plan? It seems to me copper for the horse, you don't know what you want to.
Part of it is because you can't really do the planning process without the planner. Some of it is knowing what we can and can't do. We don't know what we can and can't do. And we made some mistakes in the past with Lower Center Street, and we don't want to repeat those mistakes. So the reason really for this article is to prevent us from making further mistakes and do all the permitting that's necessary regardless of what we decide to do.
How about looking into, not, in addition to what the commission wants, what the townspeople want, town-owned land, they should have some input. But every time that they go before the Conservation Commission, it's, well, the conservation has authority over this land, we're going to do what we want.
Mike, in all fairness to you, in all fairness to you, if this article was ready, written, and discussed for permitting, the money is going to be spent on permitting.
Yes.
The way I'm reading this.
Permits only.
This says to renovate the Lower Center Street area. If it said, this money is going to be spent for permitting on the Lower Center Street area, I would be okay with that. But the way that I read this, it's making me believe that they're going to renovate the Lower Street area. That's all I'm saying. It just, it, it's vague, number one, and number two, I don't think it answers what we're really trying to do there. But I.
So you're talking about the project description there. When you say warrant.
Can this be modified to get you the permit and start that process, and then you come back at special meeting in the fall and ask for the appropriation? Because what's the timeline on starting and finishing this anyways?
There's no timeline. I mean, it's just, without, without.
When will the permits take?
You know, I don't know, three, six months, somewhere around.
So we're into the fall anyways.
But I mean, without this project, we're not going to be able to move forward. So that's the only concern I have.
The permits take six months anyways, we're into the fall anyway, so we.
I understand what you're saying. All I'm saying is, the way, if I went to the town meeting and I was to vote on this, me as a resident would think this is going to be a renovation project down at the Lower Center Street property. I don't think it's written right, I don't like it. And I think if it's going to be, the money's going to be spent on permitting, we should word it out, it's going to be spent on permitting, what have you. That's all I'm saying.
Because otherwise, you.
I don't want, I don't want.
You come back and ask for more money because there's no money for picnic tables or anything else.
Well, whatever. I mean, they don't even know what they're doing down there yet. They haven't. So if it's permitting and it's shoreline construction, let's talk about it. That's what the money's going to be spent on. That's all I'm saying.
So what you're saying, something more clear, because it says you're rehabilitating the current picnic area. They're not going to rehabilitate it, they're going to do permitting.
Right, they, because they.
That makes sense.
Right. So I like to, I would, listen, we've spent enough time on this, I know people in here waiting to talk to us. I don't like the way it's written. I'll just say that for myself, I don't like it. You guys can do what you want. If you want to make a motion, someone to vote on it, go right ahead.
Well, look, I'm just going to withdraw it, okay? Just don't even vote on it, we'll withdraw it. You know, I'll have to go back and take a look at it, and we'll see about submitting it next year. And I appreciate your comments on it.
Possibly something for a special meeting.
You know, that's fine.
I'm not trying to make you withdraw, Mike, I'm just trying to say that.
No, but it's obvious that it's too unclear what the point of it was. And I'm sorry for that.
And you don't have to be sorry. You're a volunteer doing a job here for the town of Groveland. I don't, I'm not trying to pick on you by no means. I'm just trying to look at it on the town people's side and me as a board member here, I'm just looking at that one. That's all I'm doing. I'm not trying to pick on you.
No, I understand.
You work very hard for the town, you do a lot of good things. I'm not saying that. I'm saying I don't like the way it's.
No, well, that's fine. If you don't understand it, then other people aren't going to understand, and that's not a good thing.
Not a good thing at all.
Couldn't we ask that they come back prior to, and I anticipate we'll have a special town meeting in the fall? I think.
Yeah, except that it doesn't really fall in our usual way of doing things with community preservation. So I hesitate to guarantee that path to anything, but as I say.
It worked last year.
I want it, yes, I know. I'm willing to take it out, rework it, and then whenever I can get it back in, you know, we'll do it that way.
Can't you rework it in time to get it in this, this year?
Not in time, not in time for you to vote again. I have to post it on Friday.
The other thing is, I hesitate to change it too much without having Community Preservation look at it again.
Okay.
So.
I'm all in favor of making it, you know, shorter, you know, duration in terms of, you know, getting the CPA projects looked at. Because twelve months is too, it's too far apart, you know? Last year, we had special town meeting. And we moved the ball on finishing the pines. I think that's what people want. They want quicker results, and if you need to go back to the, you know, the drawing table, it gives you time to do that without wasting a year.
Yep.
And Mike.
You know, so it hasn't been done that way in the past on CPC and some other projects. And maybe we need to look at, you know, semi, you know, annual review of these things. Get the permits going over the winter, because you're not going to do any work down there then anyways.
Right.
And then when you get the permits in hand, you're ready for the springtime.
One thing would.
You know what I'm saying, in terms of seasons, right now, if you apply for permits in June, you blow the whole summer, you can't do the work anyways.
One thing that would be nice when these projects, when you finally get the CPC projects finalized.
Yes.
And it may not happen, I don't know. It would be nice to get the board to come in here one night on the agenda, and we can talk about this. You know what I mean? We can, they can sit here, we can sit here, we can talk, and then we all understand better. You know, actually physically have some dialogue on it.
Well, you know, again, and this has not exactly to do with this project, but the reason why we have a Community Preservation Committee is to do exactly what you're saying. So the task of the Community Preservation Committee is to grill whomever is submitting a project, try to understand it, and then present it. Now, in this case, it looks funny, it looks, you know, because I'm on both committees, Conservation and CPC. So it looks like, gee whiz, why, you know, who cares about CPC? In this case, it's just the commission. But, you know, Dan was there, we examined this, we gave it quite a bit of talk and examination, I would say, by CPC. The same thing with the other projects. So we typically do that. And, you know, I don't completely understand your role of wanting to totally understand or even examine some of these things as much as you do. But, you know, that's your prerogative.
Well, because I was elected by the people.
Yes, I understand that, but you appoint, you appoint the CPC to do some of your work, and then you want to do more of the work that the CPC already did, and I don't understand that.
I'm not trying to do any work for CPC. I'm trying to do what the people elected me here in the town to do. And if one warrant comes before me like this, and I questioned it, I'm questioning it. My point I'm trying to make to you was, if we had the conversation after you guys did all your dialogue, and we come in and said this was, we came up with, guys, just run it through us. I mean, we would have had that conversation before today on this article, and then we wouldn't be having this conversation tonight. That's all I'm saying. I'm not trying to say, I'm trying to micromanage the, all these departments, I'm not. I just feel that if we had the conversation about this, we could have had dialogue on it. I mean, maybe you guys don't want to come before this, I'm not trying to say I want this board to micromanage every department. I don't. I'm the one that's been trying to bring these people in and have the dialogue, because this town never had dialogue before.
I understand that, but what you're asking then is, you're asking for everyone who presents a CPC project to be funded before CPC, a CPA project, to come before the CPC and get yay or nay and explain it fully? Then come to this committee and do the same exact thing, get a yay or nay? And then even the finance board, perhaps, go to them. No, but that's what, almost, I feel like, that's what I need to do.
You feel like I'm going to explain to you I'm not.
No, but that's what I feel like we need to do from now on, because that's the kind of comments that I'm getting.
Did they write this article?
Who?
Did the CPC or whatever write this article?
No, that comes from Conservation.
Well, whatever, did Conservation write this article?
Yes.
Okay, so maybe Conservation, I mean, I don't know, we're going to get into this thing deeply we shouldn't get into. My point is, I'm not here to micromanage anybody. I'm not. I'm trying to explain, I questioned you, you said there is some vagueness in this. We need to stop the vagueness. The other night, some paper came over to me the other night that I didn't know anything about it, I never saw it, and you said, yeah, you did. You guys, I gave it to Denise or whatever. I never saw that piece of paper. So all I'm saying is, somewhere we have miscommunication, and we need to clean it up. That's all I'm saying. That's all I'm saying.
Mike, would it be fair to say that if you're going to ask people to vote on it, whether it's, like I said, four dollars or forty-one thousand, that they know exactly what they're buying? What they're buying?
Yes.
I think that's all the people need to know is, this is what I'm going to pay for. And it's not necessarily, I mean, you could look at it as strings attached. But with any contract, it's, these are the terms of the agreement you're making with the voters and the taxpayers here, that we're going to spend forty-one thousand dollars if you vote for this, if it's approved. And this is what you get in return, and you're going to commit to those things. So that's why I said earlier, before you came in the room, I'd like some more further assurances to what you're going to do down there. And so if you delineated what those things are, now you're committed. You're going to say you're going to do five things, you're going to do six things. That's a contract with the people. That's all I see it as.
Sure.
Otherwise, I think if we vote on this and appropriate forty-one thousand, I think you have overly broad discretion. And because it is vague, the people of Groveland don't know what they're getting for their forty-one thousand. I think that's fair enough.
When they bid out, when they bid out the highway truck, if they bid out a police car, if they bid out a fire engine, there's a spec written, what we're going to get for our money. That's all I'm asking here. I mean, I'm just asking what we're going to get, and please write down what we're going to get for that money. Just list it all down, and that's it. And I just, that's all I'm asking.
And there can be estimates. I mean, you're not, until you put things out to bid, you're not going to know finite numbers necessarily. But are you going to buy picnic tables? Are you going to truck in rock and, or you're going to, you know?
It wasn't about anything that was going to be done, it was the permitting.
It was just straight permits.
And again, we're going to stop here. I'll say one more time. I'm not trying to pick on you, and please don't think I am.
It doesn't say just permits.
I say it the way it is, but this leads me to believe we're going to get a renovated Lower Center Street project, and that's all.
For forty-one grand.
For forty-one grand. And I questioned it, and I feel like.
But what you're saying is, we're only going to get a permit for forty-one thousand. A permit.
So if it said permit, it would have been spelled out in English.
And if it's a permit, you haven't even started breaking ground on it.
Right.
You haven't done anywhere.
Right, but without the, again, without those permits, we can't do anything. But.
All right. Thank you for coming in and answering our questions. I appreciate it. I don't know if you want to withdraw, if you want me to get the vote on, whatever you want to do.
No, I'll just withdraw it, because, withdraw it without prejudice, because, you know, obviously we will bring it back again, and.
And you heard from us how we feel, or I feel, or they feel, whatever.
No, I appreciate the feedback. As I mentioned, you know, it's just a little frustrating for me as far as any of these things, because other groups come in, you know, I don't want to point out Mike Davis in particular, but Mike, why is Mike here tonight? You know, it's, again, the CPA, seems like the process is broken, and I don't know exactly how to fix it. So we can talk about that offline.
All right, no problem.
Thank you, Mike, I appreciate it.
Thanks. So we're going to withdraw Article 26? And moving down the list, what else we got to do?
Just a question. Do that, is it already submitted, or are we drawn here, or are we drawn on Town Meeting Four?
No, you guys haven't voted on the, you voted each article, so you haven't voted on this one yet. So that will be withdrawn. The third article that you were holding off on was Article 33, which was the Strong Chief. You wanted to review the actual language in the law, which I sent you, and it's also included in the appendix here, so that people who have the warrant would be able to read it.
So the article basically, if I may, Bill, accept the statute would give the selectmen appointing authority. Let me read out the law, it's not that much, so that people at home can read it. What the Board of Selectmen would like to do through this article is to repeal the current Fire Chief law and convert to the Weak Chief law, which is more of a managerial arrangement between the Fire Chief and the Board of Selectmen, managerial, meaning that there's a direct reporting line, and we retain certain authority that we don't have now with the Strong Chief law, which the Fire Chief has an administrative position and has some sweeping power. So here's the actual law. "In towns which accept this section or have accepted corresponding provisions of earlier laws, there shall be a fire department established under the direction of the selectmen, who shall appoint a chief of the fire department and such other officers and firemen as they deem necessary, and fix their compensation in an amount not in the aggregate exceeding the annual appropriations." So in other words, within the budget of the fire department. "The selectmen may make suitable regulations governing the fire department and the officers and firemen thereof, and in towns which are not subject to Chapter 31, may remove the Fire Chief and other officers and firemen at pleasure. The chief of the fire department shall be in immediate control of all town property used by the department and of the officers and firemen who shall obey his orders." So what this article does not do is simply say, well, we're going to go back to the old way of how we ran the fire department. We're not, because the old way was with the Fire Board of Engineers. Should I have that correct?
Yes, correct.
So this would be a way that we've never run the fire department. We're going to use the Weak Chief law, but without a Fire Board of Engineers. So essentially, the Board of Selectmen will retain appointing authority. That's what we're after. That's what's important to this board.
Okay. Joe has read, and I know Ed likes, wants some discussion on it right now.
I just want to make a comment that I don't think you can go back. I think that the President Chief would still retain his Strong Chief position until such time as he was done. I don't think you can, I don't think you can enact this piece of the legislation to include him.
What makes you think that? Did you read that somewhere?
Can't tell you where, but I do. I think I did.
You did read it. I'm just curious.
I just have a recollection of that. I don't, I don't think it affects the, the present chief. I think it affects the, the one that would come after this particular chief. Could you check on the legality of that with, maybe with town council?
Yes, I will.
So if we have to check on the legality that we can't vote on tonight?
Yeah, you can't vote on it then.
Well, you could still, I mean, I guess it depends on what your intent is. So if you're concerned as the future, then you could vote on it either way, and then it wouldn't impact the current chief, and then it would just be his successor.
Well, it would be nice to, to be able to, the town council to say that at the town meeting, that it would affect the.
Yep, and I'll find out and pass it along to.
Well, it may impact the vote, the people at town meeting, that if they, you know, perceive this as a, you know, a changing of the guard type of thing, if the answer to your question is that, you know, the chief is under the current situation in there until the retirement at, what, 65, it's still important to know that, you know, unless we have appointing authority here, it's one person that does the appointing. So nowhere else in this town does that occur. We appoint police officers. The police chief came in, and people have seen that, and he highly recommends a certain person, and we go through the, you know, resume or application if we have questions, if we want to, and we take recommendations of the chief. So it, it doesn't preclude the fire chief of the future from making recommendations. It just allows for a more democratic process, so that there are five people up here looking at things, so that there aren't situations of what I would call a cronyism, or favoritism, or any other isms, and we have a democratic process in the Board of Selectmen. So they would not be political appointees, as some people have commented, not on this board, but I've heard some of the comments, that if you leave it up to the Board of Selectmen, they're going to be political appointees, and I, I think that's absolutely silly. I, I don't personally know of the police that have been before us. I take the recommendation of the, I took the recommendation of the police chief, and, and they get put on a probationary period, so there are safeguards in place, so there are, you know, a review process, processes in place. So people need to understand what it is we may be trying to accomplish here, and I believe it has to do with making the system more democratic. And the alternative to leave the strong chief in place is you have one person. That's very powerful. I, I perceive the difference between strong chief and weak chief as one of a democratic system versus one of a dictatorship. So I don't, I know of any situation in our town government, I'm repeating myself, where that exists, other than our current situation at the fire department. So I'm in support of this. Whether or not it allows us to appoint a new chief until he retires, irregardless of that, I think it's important that the Board of Selectmen have some input as to who is hired and what those pay rates are in hiring people at the fire department, and I do not think that that is in any way an infringement upon micromanaging what they do over at the fire department. It's really no different than any other aspect of this town government.
Denise, can I ask one question? You might not be able to answer it. If we hypothetically went to town meeting and they adopted this weak chief, the chief we have now, could he drop down to be, say, a weak chief?
That's what Ed's question was, so I will get that clarified with town council.
So we can vote for the article and get that clarification on the floor by town council, direct to the town meeting.
Correct. Well, I will provide it to you when I get it, and then he could, he could explain it to town meeting.
But irregardless of that, I think it's still important that we revert back to weak chief without the Fire Board of Engineers, for the reasons that, you know, I stated.
So the way I look at it, I'm sorry, are you still talking?
No, go ahead.
Okay. The way I look at it is if, and I'm just going to be blunt.
No.
If we want to get rid of the chief we have right now.
We like blunt.
If we want to get rid of the chief we have right now, we need to say, this is the weak chief, strong chief type situation. Or if we're willing to say the chief we have now is good, and we are willing to keep him there, then we turn around and we say, when he retires, we turn around and we go back to the weak chief, strong chief, right? In the interim, this board can change, and another board can come along and change it again. So where are we really trying to head with this?
But, Bill, it still has an effect on who you hire in, in terms of personnel over there. So it's not just the chief's position. And the other thing is, when you have a strong chief, we have a system of tenure. It's, okay? So let's just say, for the sake of argument, suppose the chief we have retires, okay? Yeah, this mandatory retirement, I believe, what, at 65 under the statute?
Yes.
Okay, so 65 is going to come and go. So let's say we hire a 47-year-old guy.
Okay.
All right, he's got tenure until age 65. Is that really what the people of Groveland bought into when they went with this? Do they know that?
I'm 100% on board with you saying.
And they stay in age, I've heard the argument, yeah, but you can let people go for cause. For cause equals litigation. Let's get real folks, okay? Because they argue damage to reputation, lost, eh, cop, bop, bop, bop.
No, no, I understand clearly what you're saying.
You know, the lawyers throw everything against the wall and see what sticks. So you know what? We need to get rid of the strong chief draw, because it's, it's potential litigation. It's just the wrong system.
So what I'm trying to say is, if we went to town meeting with this article, and we tried to get this voted in, and we turned around and said it has nothing to do with the chief we have right now, if it passes, we're willing to let him, if he liked to, stay as a weak chief.
And my, and my knee-jerk reaction to that is, some people are going to say, yeah, right.
What do you mean, yeah, right?
They might not believe that.
Well, they're going to vote it in, in the article. They're going to vote it in. We're going to say in this article, if, if, if it be, if, if we vote this article in, and our existing chief becomes weak chief, then we turn around and let him be the weak chief, is he willing to do that? If he's willing to do that. I just think if this thing goes to town meeting, the way it's written right now, we're wasting our time, because if you're really after it for a democratic reason.
Yeah.
I think if I was a fireman, I would be saying, they're nailing for the chief. That's just me. I know you're not. Don't get me wrong. I know you're not. I'm trying to put this through as if.
But, but the way to handle that is, and again, we may require an executive session to do it, is to try to see if you can negotiate something. So if we could take that issue off the table, then there would be no doubt in anyone's mind that I am absolutely sincere that I hate this statute. This statute is a, is a one-man, I'm the boss, top-down management, vertically-integrated management style, and that is not where I'm coming from, sitting at this table. It's a democratic process. I believe in checks and balances. If you don't like people that you elect, you can do something about it at the ballot box. When you hire a guy and you give him tenure, that's like putting a guy on the Supreme Court. You're stuck with him. I hope you know them before you appoint them there, because you're stuck with them. All right? So, so, that's where I'm at on that.
I agree 100% again.
You know, and, and again, I've, I've brought it up in the past. I didn't like that meeting. It was the Center Street land purchase meeting, and that, that was on the back end of the warrants that night. That meeting was a disaster for the people of Groveland. Yeah, so many things went through that pipeline, and we're going to pay for those until, you know, the end of time, okay?
So do you, do you?
You know, and I don't know how many people even know what they were voting for at that meeting. There was like five people in the room that understood the strong chief law. They're just like, tail end of that meeting.
I, I think regardless of what happens with this article, we should look at bringing the chief in and, on it for a contract. Meet with the board.
I tried it once.
Well, let's try, maybe we should try it again.
I think, I think we need to wait for the meeting to get clarification on it.
We could invite them in, put this on the warrant, invite them in, you know?
So you want, wait a minute, we're talking two different things right here.
We really are talking about two different things.
We're talking two different things. Once, we're talking about a contract with the chief, and secondly, we're talking about Article 33, without my eyeglasses on.
But you question the intent of the article. What's the purpose of it? Is it, is it, is it the Board of Selectmen's ability to hire and fire out, will, or through contract negotiations, a, a chief of the fire department? Or is it more comprehensive than that, in that we want some input into who is hired at the fire department?
That's what.
And I think that's the original thought, of our original thought was to, to go that route.
This, this is Little Groveland, okay? I'm cynical about some things. I got involved in politics for certain reasons. I'm going to go off on, you know, everything here. But you know what? We got to stop cronyism. We got to stop nepotism. We got to stop these things, okay? They exist.
Okay.
Okay? The way to handle that is, we got five guys sitting up here. We have somebody bringing in the person they want to hire. They tell, they rattle off what their credentials are, and you have a second, third, fourth, fifth, you got different sets of eyes and ears that can, that can enter, weigh in on the decision. They're not one person.
Okay, so.
So maybe we table it until fall. Get clarification on everything?
No, no.
Nope.
I have a comment.
All right, let Joe have his comment.
Before we take, you certainly can make that motion.
No, no, go ahead. I'm just talking to myself.
This has absolutely nothing to do with who is the fire chief. This has only to do with reversing a significant historic era that this town has made in implementing a set of laws that concentrates a level of power and authority in a position that is unacceptable to many people in this town. This is not a method to force the current chief to the negotiating table, nor does it, in my opinion, once it gets adopted, we, it doesn't change the chief. It doesn't change his, you know, that he's in that position. It, if it possible, it might change the way he reports to us, and it will change by vesting the authority to appoint within the fire department. That authority is reverted back to us. It's never been done before, because before, we had that authority vested in the Fire Board of Engineers. It was supposed to be, but ultimately, it was the Board of Selectmen that was exercising it. So this is a, this is a completely new way of, of managing the fire department.
And I'm in agreement 100% with you said, and I'm in agreement 100% with Dan said, but I'm going to sit in the voter's seat right now. I'm going to go into the voter box. I'm going to read this article, and I'm going to be a fireman, and there's going to be a lot of people that go in there.
Well, Bill, we, we have to, we have to.
I'm telling you right now.
We could explain it. I'll take the mic at town meeting. I'll, you know?
We have to defend the position.
The only reason I mentioned, Joe, the only reason I mentioned, if you wanted to talk about the chief right now is willing to adopt this, if it gets voted and it passes, and he wants to adopt to be a weak chief, then, then that's, would be the, one way that would help vote, get it voted in.
I think Ed.
And he's, he only has, what, a year, year left in his contract?
I think Ed brought up a very good point. I think we should present this to the town. We defend the position that what we want is to reverse a mistake that was made by this town, and that we want to get back to the Board of Selectmen, the ability for us to appoint, and that it does not affect this current chief in any way, nor is this a ploy that we're, we're trying to force him to negotiate or do anything.
It's not any of that.
All right, we've had enough discussion on it. Dan, you said you'll stand up at town meeting and talk about it. Thank you.
And I, and I would probably do what I did here, because once you hear, read the law, it's pretty clear what we're trying to do.
So Article 26, I'm going to ask a motion to accept.
Article 33, excuse me.
I'm sorry, I got my eyeglasses off. Take it back off. 33, are we going to?
Pretty dangerous thing when you're voting for stuff.
Get a motion to accept that, as written?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Article 33.
Okay, seconded.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Dan. Any further discussion on the hour we spent? No?
No.
Okay, vote. All in favor? Okay, good. Okay, Denise, what's the next one?
So you voted on all other articles. I will just call your attention to a few. Article 31 and 32, those are the two exclusions and capital, the capital exclusion and the debt exclusion. I added the explanation underneath it, so you can see the explanation. I did put in there an estimate or an approximate amount of what it would cost the taxpayer per thousand on each of those, so they would be aware of what's being voted on. 31 and 32?
So what we're doing here now is, we're going to offer the taxpayers, the, the attendees at town meeting, on how to pay for the $750,000 fire truck, either through a capital exclusion in Article 31, or a capital, a debt exclusion through Article 32.
No, because you are, you've already authorized the ballot, so both of those questions will appear on the ballot.
Oh, okay.
You are asking town meeting to support that method, and support both of these, so that whichever one passes can be enforced. Otherwise, you would have, if one of them passes and one of them doesn't, but then it passes at the ballot, we would have to have a special town meeting.
So both warrants will get them, will get them on the ballot, whichever.
Correct. So you authorize the ballot, but town meeting has to authorize the spending. So both have to pass in order for it to be in effect, which is why town meeting, because the election is a week after, the ballots will already include those questions. So town meeting will have to ratify technically that that's going to happen.
Okay, so, number one.
It is confusing.
Very confused.
Well, number one, I thank you for wording the way you word underneath. It was, it's, I'm a layman, and I understand it. So my other question to you would be, if we do not go into special, a day, not we, they, go into special town meeting, and they do not, on last year's vote of the fire truck, if they don't turn that down, if they don't rescind it, it still passes?
No. So the only thing that Article 30 does is rescind the debt authorization. So what all that means is, it sits out on our financial reports as authorized and unissued. We never have to issue that debt. We never have to purchase those bonds. At some point, because it does show up as authorized, we would have to have it rescinded, just for formality sake. If they choose not to do it this year, it would appear on next year's warrant and so on. But again, this board authorizes the purchase, so you never have to make that purchase.
Is there someone, can you, now that you want them, because I'm not that good, but anyway, I'll put you up to it, could you explain that at a town meeting? We're not able to explain that.
No, I can put an explanation. I'll, I'll see what I can write up for.
Or do you think someone should say at a town meeting what we're trying to do?
No, I can just put that we're rescinding the debt authorization. I, I can put something for that.
In layman, Bill Dunn's layman terms.
Yeah, I'll see what I can write up for that.
And all due.
Yeah, put that.
You have, you have to invalidate it.
I don't have a computer. Leave me alone.
To go in a different direction.
Correct. Well, either way, if you're not planning to bar with the way that it was voted, we need to rescind it, so it's just not out there. So it's just not on our books as authorized.
All due respect to you, Bill. Let's look at, can we all look at this for a moment? Article 31 and Article 32. We don't have to read it out loud. So now, we're, you know, it's about 9:30, quarter of 10 at town meeting, and we finally get to Article 31, okay? Some people start looking at the one that's afterwards and say, well, wait a minute, how are we buying this fire truck? Are we buying it this way or that way? How do, this is very confusing. That's why I didn't want it this way.
Capital exclusion will authorize a one-time tax increase to cover the purchase of an aerial ladder truck. The impact would be approximately 90 cents per thousand to the tax rate. You flip the page over, and you go to Article 32, the debt exclusion would be authorizing a 20-year borrowing, including principal and interest costs, to cover the purchase of an aerial ladder truck. The impact would approximately be .08,000 to the tax rate in the highest years and decrease in the, the, over the 20-year period. So I think it's.
I think it's clear.
That's very clear to me.
Yeah, but if 150, if 200 people come to town meeting, and they, and 180 of them say yes to Article 31, okay? And then 180 say yes to Article 32.
So that actually means nothing. As long as they pass town meeting, because it's, because you've already authorized the questions on the ballot, it's the ballot on capital and debt exclusions, it's, it's the town and the election that would make that decision. But town meeting has to authorize.
They're going to.
Spending authority, really. So, you know, you authorize the ballot, they authorize the spending authority. So if 30, if 180 people say yes to 31, and 180 people say no to 32, but then it goes to the ballot and the debt exclusion 32 passes, you have to have a special town meeting for town meeting to then go back and ratify, because they didn't authorize it in the beginning.
So we want, what we, what I'm trying to say is, we need to explain to people that.
You're just passing it along.
As a Board of Selectmen, we'd like to give you a choice. So the way to do that, vote for both Article 31 and 32.
You're putting it on to the taxpayers in this town to vote in, in their entirety at the election.
I think we need some language to explain.
Then at a special town meeting, we could choose to put one warrant, the winner of the two, on there. Is that what, how it would play out?
No. So that's why we discussed last meeting, that you'd have to decide, how are you going to decide which one wins at the ballot? If they both pass, and at that, that last meeting, you decided it was going to be whichever one had the most yeses was going to be the winner of the two questions.
Makes sense, right?
So that's really what would need to be articulated, is they're both appearing on, you'd like to give the taxpayers, not just the 100 and 150 people that go to town meeting, the option on these, because it impacts them. So you're authorizing both of these questions to put before the voters in this town. We need town meeting to sort of give their blessing on that. If they voted down one of these and the town passes it, we need to have a town meeting for them to then rebless that vote.
Here's my rehearsal. I'm going to explain to town meeting that it is the wish of this board, at least the wish of this board member, that you would vote for both of these, so that they end up on the ballot, and everybody can decide between the two.
Correct. And then at the ballot, we want to encourage people to vote. Correct. And then at the ballot, we want to encourage people to vote for one or the other because people really, we, we don't want everyone to say yes to both or no to both. They really should be picking their preference and voting yes to whichever one they feel strongly about.
Also relay that at the beginning of the town voting, right? Is there something we can do for that discussion? So we'll have that say, you know, when Joe will have his conversation at town meeting, and then when we go to vote, he should say somewhere it's posted, you should only vote for one or other.
Yeah, I don't know that we can put it on the ballot, so there may just have to be some discussion.
But I mean, when they come, I'm sorry, when they come to register to, to get their voting slip, it should be like on Article 31 or 30, 32.
I don't know, I have to ask and see what they can legally talk about because they really can't influence a question. The poll workers can't influence how people are gonna go in there and vote.
Mike, at the end of the day, at the end of the day, at the end of the vote, if one passes or the other one passes, I don't really care because I did my job and they're back to the people that vote. I don't want any influence. That's why it's where it is. I don't care. Now, if there's 180 and there's 180, we may have a problem.
As long as they both pass town meeting, you're good.
Right.
Whatever the taxpayers vote at the election.
Right.
Yes.
So if it's 180, 180, how do you decipher? Special town meeting?
No, that ends up on the ballot, Bill.
Ends up on the ballot.
No, so, again, town meeting just has to pass it. Town meeting just needs a majority to pass each of these questions because they're going to be on the ballot regardless. So the question that you have to decide is who's, how are you gonna determine, determine the winner of the ballot question? If you have both of these on the ballot and they both pass affirmatively, how do you know which one? You can't have that decision the night of the election because then it's gonna influence, you know, you may be swayed one way or another. So that's why I'm saying it needs to be decided, and I can certainly talk to town council if there's a method. Well, you just, last week it was decided that whichever one has the most yeses.
Okay, we'll leave it. And that's the way we'll leave it then.
So now we, we have a lot of yeses.
Yes.
One way, just so we don't end up in a.
Well, that's why we, that's why it was, you'd prefer people to vote yes on only one of the two questions, whichever one they really wanna support so that it doesn't come down to everyone saying yes or everybody saying no.
Said a minute ago, if someone can't sit up in town meeting and say, guys, listen, we really, before you even, even vote on article, whatever it is, we really need you to vote on one article. Period. Don't talk about it, just say.
But not at town meeting. You need people to vote yes on both articles at town meeting. It's, it's the election.
You want the choice in the ballot.
Yes. So town meeting, you want them to vote yes on both so that we don't have a special town meeting afterwards. No, but town, but town.
You could put a sign 200 yards down the street that says, only vote for 31 or 32.
But town meeting, you can encourage people to vote for both so that the voters in this town have an opportunity to pick what they want, and then we wouldn't need a special town meeting.
I would hold a sign out there and say debt exclusion only.
46 bucks? Someone's gonna go up there, they'll get one of their group.
And you say debt exclusion only, big sign out there, cost you 46 bucks for your home, worth 600,000.
Less than 750.
Um, the only other change currently, and I will say, I haven't gotten the final revision from town council, so some of the language may change slightly. Article 34 is a zoning bylaw. I got that this morning. We are still waiting on the attorney general to review that language. Because it's so complex, town council wanted to run it by the attorney general to make sure that if town meeting passes that, that would pass at their level as well, the way the question is worded. Not necessarily the bylaws in their entirety, but at least the, the article would be accepted by the attorney general. So before, so this may change. And again, council is still reviewing the remainder of the articles. The article, which we're not talking about the second, but the landfill article, they may reword that a little bit differently on the special town meeting article. Still allow the, this board to sell those land parcels, but he said some of the language may change depending on, um, you know, what the requirements are. So, so I will still send you all the finalized, but the the purpose of each article will not change, just the legal language may be fine tuned depending on town meetings, uh, town council's recommendations. So Article 33. So you've now voted on all of the articles.
Did Dan, did something, did Dan have a question about the water sewer article?
Uh, you'd have to ask Lieutenant McDonald.
Dan, did you have a question about the, you know, we voted on?
Yes, I did. I wanted to reconsider that. If I, I'll, I'll tell you why, um, if, if it's, um.
Can you?
That's Article 13.
If it's relevant. Let's reference the article. Let's take a look at it.
Well, here's the deal, um, little birdie asked me, well, what about, uh, they got, they got free cash over there? Why don't they spend the money on the free, uh, the free cash on the, uh, on the road improvements? And I said, I don't know anything about the free cash. All right? So I said, why don't I go to the source? Are you the source?
I am, Jim's here.
Cause I don't like hearsay and, uh, and, and conjecture and rumors, so I might as well get the guy in the know in here to tell us about, why don't you spend the free cash? You got the dogs of it. I heard you got a million bucks.
That was a birdie that, uh?
Someone is totally incorrect to think that we have a million dollars.
All right, so whatever that is, so I thought I would demystify it.
Yes. But before you start, I just want, did you get the email I forwarded you this morning from Tom Cusack, the water superintendent? So he actually provided a response to that.
It was lengthy. I apologize. I was at a closing.
And that's fine. So he did provide some information and said that Jim would be here for further discussion.
It's okay to bring in, right? Facts are good, right?
Sure they are. Everybody knows what's going on.
I want everyone to know what's going on.
We're as transparent as you people are.
There you go. So if there isn't any money or you're gonna use it on other things, then that's what we need to hear, right?
Exactly. We do have free cash.
Okay.
It's just shy of $300,000.
Yeah.
We do a million and a half dollar, uh, construction project.
Yeah.
We'd like some contingency money for that.
Yeah, 20% overrides.
Exactly, you know, it's.
Yeah, happens.
Part of, uh, part of, uh, God in the Street has, um, has, um, um, rock in it, so it's gonna be, we know it's gonna be a problem.
Pull it up. You don't know what's in there, right?
Exactly. Uh, the other thing that you may not know about is that we certainly have water rates, um, and our rates are based in our, uh, covering our, our, um, budget is based on how much water we pump, and it changes from year to year. I think I mentioned that to you before. So if we have a really wet year, we don't pump as much water. We just don't. So we always have money. We've always had money in reserves. It's never probably more than 300 or 400,000 dollars.
All right.
But in, 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 over the years, we reinvested that money back into it. We put 350 towards the tank, 100,000 dollars towards, um, uh, Mattenley's property, you know, whatever it takes. We don't roll it over year after year. We don't, we don't hoard it. We don't keep it. We, we spend it on our budget.
So you're not, you know, not swimming in cash over there.
We currently have 296,000 dollars, I believe.
That's what's in there, including the current certified cash that you just found about, so it wasn't.
You got under 300.
Half a million bucks.
That's not.
All right. So again, I'm fact checking here. I don't want you to
Not a problem.
Take any of it the wrong way, but when I don't know, I'll ask.
So some of the.
You're more than happy to tell you.
That's all.
Some of the authorities that were quoted by, uh, the commissioners, um, I mean, um, Tom Cusack's, um, response in writing was he put some percentages in there as to how much is recommended for free cash percentages to back up certain projects. Your project is not just 1.5. You've got other projects, right?
We do.
So we, we are $2 million in projects, maybe?
It could be.
Roughly?
Yeah, it depends. We pick and choose what we're gonna do.
And so we're back.
Based on, based on how we start, how, how the summer starts, how it gets going, how much water we pump, and, uh, we, we trend that, so we know exactly, pretty much where we're gonna be. Um, and then based on that, we hold money back to make sure that we make, we make our budget because if we don't, you guys have to.
So you're holding on to 296,000 dollars to, as a contingency against approximately 2 million dollars.
It is a rainy day fund, and yeah. Typically, we, we, we spend most of that money back into that budget. We carry over.
I'm, I'm certainly not in favor of.
A few hundred thousand dollars, that's the extreme of it.
Sorry to interrupt. I'm certainly not in favor of depleting your rainy day money.
Joe, I wasn't either. I just wanted to ask a question at the end, so some, uh, you know, again, people ask me things. I, I like to think I s- I serve the people of Grove Land by finding out the facts. We have cameras here and I like to get it out on, out in the open, so appreciate you coming in. I didn't want a wild goose chase you.
It's okay.
But if I hear one thing and it's not true.
We're elected officials just like you are. We're as transparent as, as much as you guys would like to be.
And Jim, and another thing is like kind of what Dan's talking about a little bit is we just need to keep more dialogue between us and you guys. And it's not to micromanage it. It's for this reason, so we know, we don't get the rumors of million dollars of money spent. We had, why are they hoarding their million dollars? And I hear it all the time. They're hoarding a million dollars.
Oh, you guys gotta.
Yes, here, keeps it out in the open. Keeps it in front of the camera.
Under the mattress.
Secret Swiss.
Someplace Denise has it, I think, but I, we don't.
Yes.
But anyway, that's all. That would be great.
Thanks for coming in.
And as you know, and we've already had this conversation before, you and here, we have a lot of worn-out pipes in Grove Land. We really need to be proactive and start getting those babies changed over.
Forty-year-old waterman.
Yep, we can get those modernized and get the rusty water complaints down to zero.
So you got about 15% holding, uh, rainy day money against the potential project aggregate.
You know, if, if, if you go by what consultants tell you, it should be 50.
30%.
You know, that's sometimes unreasonable.
Not reasonable.
It's not. We, we, we kinda, we're skating through what we do, what we have, and as long as we have rainy day money and, uh, we can meet our budget no matter what, or what, or what our commodity sells at, or how much we pump at, then we're okay. So we keep it pretty close.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming in.
All right, have a good night.
And be impatient. Okay. Are we ready? We're all going with a warrant?
Unless anyone else has any other articles they wanted to go back and talk about, or otherwise you are, you have voted on all of the articles.
Joe, you know, they say it was nice to see, uh, if, if the revolving a county.
Appendix B?
Appendix B, revolving a town vote for BG Fox, uh, Pine Recreation, uh, Pine Recreation Boardroom, zoning board revolving, finding a bag room. So this, it's, it's nice to see that, um, always get questions about that. Hopefully that can be added, and there'll be somebody there to either experience one of those, after explaining those, okay?
Yes, so the, the law requires them to give a report to town meeting, so there is a printed report. That's really what they would say. That's the standard of what people would stand up and say. So instead of in case somebody's missed or in case somebody doesn't ask about it, I wanted to print the actual report so people can read them ahead of time and know about it.
Great. Well done.
Okay, we're ready to go forward?
So if, if there's every, if there's nothing else, I will have you sign the warrants. So I'll pass down the annual and the special. Yep.
I have one, an item for old business. Whenever, whenever.
Does anyone else have anything on old business?
I know we brought up about votes on the board, but I don't remember if I ever passed them.
Uh, yes, votes of the board. You voted on all three. You seconded all three of them, actually.
Well, it was, it was, uh, four hours ago.
Yes. Um, you did vote on them.
Does anyone have anything down this end of the table on the old business? Dan or Ed?
I have one item, one year, whatever.
Well, you were signing, so I was trying to.
Yeah, that's okay. Anybody else?
Okay, go, go, Joe.
All right, so this, um, I wanna, I wanna express this to the board. This, um, discussion that we've had regarding the secret ballot and the use of electronic devices at town meeting, I think we need to table it this year, and, and here's the reason why.
Go expand.
We don't have a bylaw. We don't have a bylaw that allows that. So the only default position we have is the town meeting rule book. And basically, what town council, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, has confirmed is that we would have to put a question before the town meeting at each warrant article as to whether or not they would wish to vote, uh, through a secret ballot using this electronic device. And and if we get a substantial amount of no's throughout the whole night, we just blew $8,500. So, uh, we have to table it, uh, because we need to, either whether it's this board or it might be one of my projects, uh, in the spring. I might come back in the spring or summer with a petition and also a proposed bylaw so that by next town meeting next year, uh, the town can vote to, uh, implement a bylaw that would allow secret balloting with electronic device, and then we would have something to hang our hat on and say, okay, we can now spend the money on the devices because it's, um, in the bylaw, it's been approved by town meeting. So we're probably a year away or two before we can actually see secret balloting. We, we have to maybe come back next year, see if we can approve a bylaw and then, um, and then implement it the fa- the following year. I don't think any, I don't think any one of us wants to spend $8,500 on a whim and then, you know, people say, no, I don't want, uh, on Article 31, I don't want that to be voted secretly. I want that open. On Article 33, I wanna see the, you know, I don't want that secret. We got enough no's, we would have blown $8,500. We got consultants standing there doing nothing. That's where we're at with that.
Go ahead, Dan.
I agree with Joe in terms of, I mean, we probably need more time on it. Um, I think there's another way to go where you could, um, you know, someone suggested to me that we can use our, um, a ballot counting machine. I don't know how that would work. With, uh, manual cards or something and have the, um, um, ballot reader. Currently, currently, don't we have a, um, a ballot question reader?
Yeah, unless we use something else, by the way.
Yes, in the voting booths, yes. There is, there are two, one for each precinct, yes.
Okay, so it may not happen this year because we're, you know, uh, under the, under the gun here. We ran out of time.
Right.
Okay?
You can't put a ballot reader together. It's too, too short.
All right. But going forward, if it's cheaper to have the ballots prepared, everybody registers, you hand them a ballot, they fill them out, and then you tally them all up.
So I would have to talk to town council. So when I spoke to them about it, it was, you could do a secret ballot,
Yeah.
which would be, um, you know, hand out pieces of paper that have the art someplace. They write the article number, two boxes, yes, no, they check one. Then they have to physically come up and drop it in the box and then those are counted. That would be per article basis, depending on if there's a motion and it's accepted. I don't know if you could allow, I don't know if you could have sort of ballots in their entirety at town meeting.
No.
Uh, without a bylaw, I think.
And then tally them all up at the end.
Correct. I don't believe you could do that. You'd have to vote each article.
Article 1, 2 through 30.
Correct.
And you just get the results all at once after the reader.
Correct. I don't think that would be because a lot of the articles would be contingent on other ones and people wouldn't know what passed and what didn't pass.
To your point, what you said, maybe we need a bylaw change and maybe that's the direction we should move in, whether it be, you know, I, I believe in privacy. I don't think anyone has a right to know how you vote on anything. It's really none, none of, no one's business unless you wanna make it their business. I, I, I don't think anyone should be pressured, coerced into voting in any way. There shouldn't be any peer pressure of any kind. Um, and people take things, people can get pretty vicious when it comes to appropriating body and being for or get something, and especially a little town, people, it can get nasty.
No way this, this season we can do anything.
No, so, so what town council had said was, if it was going to be a temporary solution, like we were gonna try it and see if it worked, then it wouldn't need to be every article, Joe. It would need to be, someone would have to make a motion at the start of town meeting. It would have to be seconded and passed in order to use those electronic voting devices the entire night. However, if it fails, then we have wasted $8,500 on one night because we would have to have the contract and have that equipment there. If you're looking for long-term, the plan would be to get a proposal on what a long-term contract for these devices are, put together a bylaw change and go to town meeting with that before you actually agree to the contract. So that you propose it to town meeting, they discuss it, debate it, accept it, don't accept it, and then you know, okay, they've accepted it, so going forward, we're gonna start using these devices. You already have an idea of the price and you know that town meeting supports it.
So it would be used in town meeting of 2018 if we made a bylaw change next, next year?
Correct. That is correct.
My question to you is, let's just say hypothetically, you had a question about the ladder truck. You had one box and you had another box. People came up, they came in, they put their vote in the boxes and went around. We can't do that now.
No, so you, so you can still, that's a secret ballot, but it's the same thing. Someone needs to make a motion at that article. It needs to be seconded and accepted by town meeting. If that's the case, though, but, but let me just, so if, if you're anticipating that, then we need to be prepared with pre-print, pre-printed slips.
Exactly.
We have one voting box, which is what you use at a, at a town meeting, and you would have to figure out what town council had recommended was, in the past, it's not the same setup now, uh, but in the past, it used to be the stage. The selectman would sit on the stage, they'd have the box on the stage, people would go up one side, drop it in and go down the other side. So you physically see that each person is only dropping one slip of paper in that box. It would have to be a little bit different with the setup. I would suggest the box be in front of the board and town council. People would still have to get up and drop their ballot in, and then you have to count them. So if that's something you anticipate, we can be prepared, but I would have to then, you know, and I can just do it here, print it up, cut them up, get ready for it.
The person, the gentleman that come and stand by that ballot machine on voting day, could we have them come stand there by that day of voting? That box?
Yeah, I don't, I mean, I don't think you need to get, because I think as long as you put it in full sight of everybody, you'll see who's coming up and dropping it in. But you'd have to have a flow of people.
I agree.
Yep.
And then if we did counting, could we have a couple volunteers, maybe with that, those gentlemen in the back room counting while we're finishing up town meeting or whatever?
No, you can't finish an article. You have to, you have to count the ballots before you move on to the next article. That's the issue.
And I don't think there should be a select, a selectman doing it.
Well, in the past, what, what, right. What town council has said is in the past, you either have
The moderator?
A couple people or everyone just kinda sorts them into yes and no piles, and then the moderator or town council or the town clerk would then count them. A couple people, or everyone just kind of sorts them into yes and no piles, and then the moderator or Town Council, or the town clerk would then count them.
So ahead of time, we can get a couple people to do that.
It wouldn't take long. It'd be a hundred and, a hundred to a hundred and fifty at the most.
I mean, I think the most time-consuming would be people coming in and dropping their ballots, is what's gonna take the time. That's rarely where your time would be.
Could you do one box on one side of the room, and the other box on the other side?
So I believe we only have one, and they have to be a specific, has to be a locked box that we have to, and we do have one in the vault. But I believe we only have the one.
Practicality of it is, is that the people there that think it would be advantageous to have an open vote, will vote not to. And those that think it might be advantageous to have a private vote.
Oh, it's worth a shot.
It's worth a shot.
It's worth a shot, and I think the people.
Well, I can definitely support that. I can definitely support if you guys wanna try it that way.
Yeah, I'd like to try. I'd like to try.
They don't go to meeting because they don't wanna raise their hands.
So I can be prepared with enough for several articles if it comes up more than once throughout the night.
On big-ticket items.
Right.
We should go in that direction, I think.
So then someone would need to make a motion before that article.
You don't necessarily need a private vote or a thousand dollars.
As long as you're voting members of the community.
Denise, one of us can make a motion on, on whatever warrant that comes up. One of us can make a motion, say, by the way, folks, I'd like to make a motion to do a secret ballot for Article blankety-blank.
Yes, and you would do that right before that specific article. I would recommend that one of you also seconds it, so that you can get a discussion going on. And then once the floor opens up to discussion, you'd have to sell your position on it.
Worth a shot.
I agree.
Yeah, and I'll still put forward the petition and the bylaw this summer.
I think so, because.
I'm still gonna do it.
There's only a few articles, right?
Because otherwise, you're gonna get the impatient crowd that wants to just leave.
A lot of them are repetitious articles.
Correct. There's not a lot of.
Not a lot of articles are repetitious. Okay. So it's, it's really a few articles, really.
I think we know which ones.
Does someone wanna make a motion? Can we vote on that tonight?
You don't need to, you don't even, 'cause it's, it's every, it's every voter's right at town meeting to make a motion for a secret ballot. But I will be prepared to have.
So you'll have the goods to make it happen.
I will have, I will have the box, and I will have.
Who set the order of the articles?
So I did.
You did.
I think she did a great job.
I want the rail trail dead last, and if those people stay, every one of them.
Well, that's why I had put the.
I want them dead last midnight.
That's why I had put the fire and the zoning last, 'cause I figured that was gonna draw the biggest crowds.
The rail trail one. They all walked out last year.
I'm bringing something to eat with.
The rail trails in the middle, but I honestly thought the fire discussions and the zoning would bring, bring the biggest crowds.
Mike Wood is, Mike Wood said he's bringing trail mix.
Yeah, trail mix for the rail trail.
The lawyer brings chocolate and candy.
We might not have a quorum after the rail trail vote. I mean, you know.
Oh, I think we will. I think we will.
It's gonna be a good meeting. It'll be a great meeting.
But anyway, so we're good with this. We're all in agreement, we're gonna go with it.
Yep.
Yep, so I'll, I'll have, we'll get the ballot box. Well, I'll have pre-printed slips.
There's gonna be a mess, but I'll, I'll go ahead and vote with it, but I think it's gonna be an absolute mess.
No, I don't think so. We'll make it work.
It's gonna be fun, you know.
I hope I'm wrong.
It's gonna be fun.
It's gonna be fun.
Midnight down at Bagnell is not fun.
I, I have to say, there is a formality here. We wanna request, the Board of Selectmen needs to request, make this request to the moderator that, that we wanna do this.
Well, again, it's every person who's there, who is a voting member, can make a motion on any article for the secret ballot. You can give them a heads up and say that this might be coming. Yes. But then again, it's, it still would be up to this board to then sell it to town, the majority of town meeting.
I think it's an important formality. It's, it's the moderator's meeting to run, and we should at least let him know, at least a phone call, and say, this is the.
Joe, he's probably watching right now.
The wish of the board.
Well, I will send him, once I have the final warrants from Town Council, I will send those to him, and I, and I will let him know that.
Say that the board wishes to pursue secret balloting on a per-warrant basis by vote. Just to let him know.
Okay, we ready to move forward?
Yep. What else is there?
Okay. Everyone's good with the business? All right, correspondence. Proposed job description for the harbor master, and pro, proposed job description for the dock master.
So I included those just for you to review. We can put it on, I have it on the nineteenth agenda, so that you can actually discuss it more in-depth, but I wanted to give you some time to review it before we had a discussion on it.
Okay, in that, in the discussion of this, do we have?
We're not meeting on the eighteenth?
The eighteenth is a holiday.
Nineteenth on Tuesday.
So we're meeting on Tuesday the nineteenth.
That's that.
Are we, are we going to post these two jobs at one point?
Yes, so they're both volunteer positions. That would be up to the board if you wanted to post, where we have a current harbor master that's been appointed until June thirtieth already.
I think you should, Bill.
I agree. Especially we have a dock master we don't have right now, right?
But I would recommend, so we do have someone that's appointed until June thirtieth, so you should tie that into correlation with the new appointment year, if you're gonna post it and plan an appointment around July one.
Okay. Did you guys hear what she just said?
Yeah, we have somebody appointed until June thirtieth, so we need to implement it for July first, if we're gonna post it.
Right, I agree.
Post-it effect of July first.
Yes, so we can still post it, but the effective appointment date would be July one. Yep.
So that the current person can also apply.
Correct. And you'd have to decide what you want for, you know, we didn't, I don't think he has, he has some qualifications, but again, it is volunteer, so.
And, and a lot of these, this job description was helped through the current police chief?
The chief, the chief is the one who provided them to me, yes. So he wrote them up. He took a lot of them from other, you know, other communities, but this is what he has put together.
Okay, and again, the police chief is actually the person that runs the harbor master and dock master, kinda oversees it, et cetera, et cetera.
Yes, it falls under public safety.
Public safety, okay. All right, so we have that as correspondence. We can look at it next week, and then we'll talk about it on the future agenda item. That's all taken care of. Now we gotta go forward.
Finance director.
Finance director's time.
I just have two quick things. So I had a conversation today with the Essex Tech Superintendent. They have an interim superintendent. I had expressed my frustration at a meeting last week, that we don't get any communication from Essex Tech. We don't get any numbers. I'm sorry?
I'm rubbing off on you.
We don't get any numbers, we're not getting any feedback, until we get a bill in November, and they say, hey, we took more students than we told you. He actually told me that they provide a significant amount of information to these school districts, and they're supposed to facilitate it on. We have not gotten anything. So, and I actually talked to the other two, I talked to Merrimack and West Newbury, and they have not gotten any information either. So Essex Tech is gonna add us to get the direct communication instead of going through the school department. They said that that seems to be a recurring issue with regional school districts. Salisbury wasn't getting it from theirs either. So, just to discuss, so we have six freshmen, two sophomores, one junior. We have no seniors, so we're not losing anybody. Five students have applied. The cost per pupil is sixteen thousand four hundred, and I think it was sixty-four dollars. He does not believe all five will be accepted, because for the non-member communities, he said there's about eighty-three spots, and they have, and don't quote me on the number, I think he said like thirty-four non-member communities. So, they, he does not expect it to be five. I said, well, I was told last year you weren't gonna accept more than three, and you accepted six. He said, I understand that, but we're really trying to stick to the enrollment, keep the numbers what they're supposed to be. So, I did add eighty thousand dollars into the budget, which would be probably three new students. So hopefully, as long as we stick with three, we won't need to come back to a special town meeting to add additional money into that budget. He will give me, I think he said the first week of June, they will tell me who's been accepted, or how many students they've accepted. He said that does change over the summer, if students decide they don't wanna go. He said there's usually a net of three to five kids in the summer that come and go. So, it's not a definitive until the October first enrollment numbers, but at least there's more communication than we have been. The other item I have was dropped off this evening, from Joe Campbell regarding the Groveland Baseball League. He's asked me to just read this letter. Dear Town of Groveland Selectmen, on behalf of the Groveland Baseball League Board of Directors, Team Managers, Coaches, and Other Volunteers, I would like to invite you to this year's opening day celebration. The two thousand and sixteen season's opening day will be on Saturday, April twenty-third. Festivities will begin with the team parade around the streets bordering Washington Park at ten-thirty a.m. It would be great to have you lead the parade once again from the Washington Street Fire Station. The program will begin around eleven a.m. when all teams have returned to the major league field and are assembled on the infield. Thank you for all the support you have given to the Groveland Baseball League through the years. The strength of the program and the improvements to Washington Park are a direct result of the teamwork between our town's leadership, our town service departments, generous sponsors, enthusiastic families, and willing volunteers. This year, there will be a special ribbon-cutting ceremony for the new playground, which was made possible with your support and direction through the CPA program. On behalf of the Groveland Baseball League Board, I hope you have time in your schedule to stop by Saturday, April twenty-third, to enjoy this annual Groveland event. Sincerely, Joseph Campbell.
That's right.
So April twenty-third.
Great job, Joe.
April twenty-third.
Yes, and that is all I have for you all this evening.
Okay, so, segment time.
So we all going?
Well.
Your kids are there, right? My kids are there.
This is my.
Going?
This is what I was planning on doing, and I was gonna talk about it at a later date, and I don't know if I could talk about it now, but I plan on seeing as, I was gonna talk to you guys individually, but seeing as many as us can go. And I would like to say a couple words on behalf of the program and the renovation project they did down there, and kinda give them all a big thank you, in that we appreciate all their work. So I think that's something that we really should do.
Yeah, I, I have an obligation that day, so I'm glad you guys are able to go. That's good. And to make those words, I think, is a great idea.
Down there, and I think that.
There's still some stuff down there.
Yeah, they'll have it all done, supposedly, by this day.
Yeah, I think they're cleaning up the parking lot now.
Yeah, as many as us that can go there, I think it'd be great, and we should support them.
I know Dan and I have kids in the program, so.
Yeah, I was hoping Bill would sing the National Anthem, you know.
Bill?
Yeah, I was hoping, yeah, I was hoping.
That's my buddy Ed.
I was hoping you'd sing the National Anthem at.
Make a motion for that.
Denise!
Make a motion?
Oh, I'm busy that.
You're doing that.
Yeah, you'd sing the National Anthem, open the day? Yeah, you.
I'm probably the only one on the board that knows all the words.
I don't.
You don't need to know all the words.
I'm still learning them.
I'm still at a second grade level.
All right, so we're in agreement? As many as can get there, we'll get there.
Yep.
Okay, so, the, one thing I'll need from you at that point in time is, I don't think I should single one person, I think I will just do it as an overall type thing. Okay, so, under Selectmen's time, I have one item. I got a note from the town clerk, whatever. Jan Brody.
Yes, the town clerk.
Yeah.
Ah, whatever.
She would like, on behalf of Valerie Osborne, to announce during this meeting that there is a opening in the housing authority board due to the passing of Tom Sayer, and there is now an opening. And again, I would like to say, on behalf of the Board of Selectmen to Tom's family, we greatly appreciate the time he served. And again, we feel bad for your hardship, and anything we could do to help you in the future, we would, and make anything easy for your family. But then again, we need to make it verbal that there is an opening on the housing board.
And Bill, if I just may, I believe it's to finish, it's one year to finish a five-year term, if I remember correctly.
To finish a five-year term, you're right.
So it would be a one-year appointment until that position came up in two thousand and seventeen for reappointment.
Okay. And I know Ed wanted just, I just got two items, and quickly, getting late. I just noticed then, that even on the finance board, I think there's four vacancies. There's, there's other town boards that there are vacancies. Some of these are tough to fill, and I know we had almost made a commitment to, for somebody to speak about it at each meeting, that we have openings on boards. In fact, some of the elected positions, there's nobody running on some of them.
That's correct.
And we'll have to address that. But just, if anybody is, is looking to, could help the town out, volunteer on some of these boards to get their information to Denise or to Cassandra, that they're interested on serving on a certain board. And I, I think that one of the two of you, either Cassandra or yourself, had mentioned that you would put a list on the website of the different boards, maybe to our man.
I've had a list since, yeah, since last year's appointments. I updated as we fill positions.
So one of the, one of the boards that is in dire need of some help would be the health?
So the Board of Health.
Board of Health, okay.
Yes, so we have one, so it's a three-member board.
Yeah.
One member moved out of state last year.
Right.
Another member is resigning on the day of the election. I have had residents come in and express interest, but at this point, we, you really can't appoint him until the election, because you'd only be appointing him until the election. So if he is interested, he should either do a write-in, or come back after the election if no one does a write-in and be appointed.
And one note on the health board, I would like to say to the board and on behalf of the town, Barb O'Hanley is in the hospital, and I'd like to give all our wishes to Barb, and hope he gets well soon, and everything turns out well for him. He's been a town volunteer for years, and all we can do is say, hope, hope you pray. And then, go ahead.
I don't know if anybody has noticed outside the treasurer's office, I happened to notice it today, the artwork from the, from the Bagnell School. And I think there's probably a letter ought to go out to the teacher, that committing him for bringing that in. And I, and I know it's gonna be updated, revolving, but maybe in the letter, how about some more? Well, we got some drab walls in here that we could hang something from, and those, it's hard to believe that those were done by, up to, what, sixth grade?
It was, yes.
Yeah, there are some pictures there at the superintendent's office that they get rotated in and out, but you're right, there should be some down here, too.
Yeah, yeah, there's four outside there, but, you know, look at these walls, there's nothing here.
So I had worked with, yes, I had worked with Principal Brendan Keenan. He, we, you know, it's great that we have a dialogue between the town and Bagnell School. So him and I speak occasionally on different matters, and he discussed that he was gonna have some artwork. I said, we'd love to have some at town hall. I think it's great to start displaying some of the stuff. We've had some families come in to look at it. My only concern was I had to remove one of the pictures, and I moved it elsewhere in the building. I don't know the historic, I mean, obviously, they're all historic pictures, so I didn't wanna start taking down too many of those, 'cause we don't have a lot of place to move and add those pictures, so that's why I picked that spot. If this board would like, I have no problem moving or rearranging the pictures, but I would have to physically remove one, and there's really not another place to put one of these larger pictures.
I mean, this is kind of out of the way. It's not in the hallways, but.
Right.
We could look at them when we're here at ten o'clock at night.
Well, the issue with this is, this, the council on aging uses this most days, so if people wanna come in and see it, they wouldn't really have access to the room, which is why I thought that was a good spot at the tax office. There's a lot of foot traffic.
Pictures up on our website.
So, I'd be happy to put more around.
Is Selectmen's time?
No, I didn't show them.
Dan, you all set? Selectmen's time?
Yeah, I don't wanna talk anymore.
Okay. Ed? Almost, almost finished.
Oh, no, I'm done.
Joe?
I'm good, thank you.
So the next meeting is Tuesday.
The nineteenth.
April nineteenth, that, well, there will be an executive session. I just haven't set the time. So, plan for about five, between five-thirty and six for the start of the meeting.
Okay.
With the regular meeting beginning at six-thirty.
Meeting, meeting after that is.
I will be here.
Meeting after that is town meeting.
So the following week will be town meeting.